I'd like to call the meeting of the Camarillo Library Board to order. Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Kildy.
Here.
Trustee Craven.
Here.
President Protim Mulche.
Present.
President Santangelo.
Present. Let the record reflect, all trustees are present. Mr. Tremblay, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to address the Camarillo Library Board? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So move.
Second.
Vote? Motion carries unanimously. Any departmental items?
None.
No, we don't have any departmental items. Any legal counsel items? No. Comments from staff?
Yes, we have Mr. Antonio Apodaca. He is the library director here to present the library report.
Great.
Let me turn the mic on. There we go. Hello, you hear me now a little bit better. We had a busy month in January, and you can see from the report that we submitted a lot of different types of events. We started a new service called Zip Books. This is a grant-funded program that works almost like an interlibrary loan for anyone who's ever had to do something like that. It's basically for books that we don't have in the building. You get it for free as a member of the public, and it gets mailed to your home through Amazon Prime. And it happens with such quick turnaround time, it seems like a pretty nice alternative to waiting months for another library to find it and send it over to us. So that's called Zip Books, and we have some parameters and procedures with it that, you know, will prevent it from abuse, but we're hoping that it's very popular. And it's something that we at least, you know, have funded through this grant in the fiscal year. So that's a very exciting thing. We hosted a blood drive and had some musical performances that were very popular. We hosted an open house for our adult literacy program, which was long overdue. It was a chance for our learners and tutors to come and, in an informal setting, be able to hang out and talk and just kind of have fun and connect in the library instead of an instruction-based setting, I suppose, which was nice. We also had a business expo. We do that in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. It was very popular. It was raining that day, and it didn't look so good outside, and sure enough, people came. And I think the food samples from the vendors helps, you know. So that's what I -- it's a secret. But that was very popular, and we're really happy to plug in. And under the Small Business Community banner and entrepreneurship, folks just really turn out for that event. And then just quickly, wanted to update the Young Adult Center. So we had ribbon cutting last December, well, December before last, excuse me, for 2017. So now, you know, it's been open for a good year, and we have a little summary of its usage here. We average about 100 teens a day. Most are walking over from Rancho Capana High School, which is a traffic that we can count on and allows us to have teens in the library, which is a good problem to have a lot of times. So we're excited about what we're doing in there. Of course, our event participation skyrocketed once the teens were showing up and really getting involved. So that's up about 75 percent. And then our teen cardholders, so these are library cardholders with ages that fall within the teenage range, that usage is up as well, about 13 percent, which is good. And I think this is counter with some of our other statistics have been recently when it comes to circulating books and checking out materials. It's a real struggle to get a teenage audience involved, a lot of times with print materials, physical books, stuff like that. But we've found certain collections that really are going out frequently. Manga and anime tend to be the most popular titles, so that's a lot of Japanese comics, basically. And then just quickly, wanted to say our other real finding, I suppose, or the thing that we're taking away is that informal gaming leagues are very popular, and they are showing up to use our study rooms a lot more than study groups. So these are teenage groups that come in and they game competitively using our Xbox One or other services that they have on their computers, and basically sit there and have a very engaging time in our teen area. So, you know, we go about enforcing different behavior policies and things like that to make sure everyone gets to use this space. But that's been a real surprise that I don't think we anticipated, was that we would be a haven for our gaming community here. And then just quickly, on February 23rd, I brought a T-shirt. We have our Chinese New Year celebration. This will be my first year, but I hear it's big, and it's pink, so what do you know? So this is the Year of the Pig, and we welcome any kind of guest speakers. I know that we've had city council members or library board members in the past come and speak at the event, and if you'd like to, we'd welcome that. Just maybe let Administrative Services know, and we'll get that arranged. And I think that's all that I had for you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and I'm looking at what came out in City Scene, but it talks about youth and family programs, and it only mentions one story hour. It doesn't list any other hours. It says that there's a special story time with First Five, January 7th and January 8th. Do we still have the other story hours?
We do. I wonder if for space constraint or something, we do have our regular story times, and we have our pause for reading programs that are ongoing. The difference between that one is that we had worked out a partnership with First Five, so it does appear on our special events calendar. And I wonder why, if that's why it had gotten picked up. But anyway, short answer, yes. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, come in, we have a story time going on in the morning at the library.
I had several people call me because it was just the one, and I said, "I don't know, call the library."
Yeah, well, we still have them. That's good to know. I think for our next City Scene submission, which is coming up now for the, you know, next couple of months, we'll make sure to point that out, because I think it might have just got lost in the shuffle.
Might have.
Yeah, I hope that's all it was. And I think we connected the story time title with this First Five special program, and maybe that was the confusion.
Okay.
But yeah, so we still got all that good stuff going on.
Thanks.
All right.
I also have a question as well. If you don't mind. I did notice in the stats, and the observation was made last time you came and presented, that the circulation of physical books is declining, and the pickup of audiobooks and ebooks is increasing. Does the library intend to try to get more titles, more digital titles, in light of that trend, of that demand?
Yes, and the way the current funds are broken down is we are receiving that budgeted amount every fiscal year, and we can see a pretty clear line between the physical materials and then basically everything else. And it's lumped into a category called databases. This is the changing, I think, movement that we're seeing. We need to start spending that database money on ebooks. And that's the plan for this fiscal year. So as we round the corner about April, what we do is take our remaining database funds and spread them out in purchases for ebooks. So we are dedicating more resources. I think because of the current way that it's funded, it happens a little slower than what we see as more regular trickle of monthly physical titles coming in. So as a member of the library, you come in and you can get on hold for a new print book. Every month, we got our new shipments coming in, like, regular. The ebook cycle has worked a little differently, it sounds like. So we have a big mass purchase coming up, basically, and that's been a real focus of ours. So moving ahead, it might be something that we'll look to reallocate. Kind of looking over to Administrative Services and Carmen here to see what we could, how that looks in the fine print. Basically, the money doesn't change, it's just the attention to the fund. So yes, there's a plan, and as I understand, closer to the fiscal year, we get that all spent down and have a big haul of ebooks.
And then other than manga and anime, is there any standout genre that seems to be moving on whether that's the physical book side or the ebook or e-audiobook side?
Sure, yeah, and so not just for teens, I think, right? Yeah, so as far as library-wide, biographies, I think, are picking up. This is probably due to people just have them in their book clubs and are waiting to read the next big book that's coming out that's a biography of a popular figure, political figure. Historical fiction seems to be very popular in the print form. And then anything that has instruction, it could be cookbooks, exercise, fitness, wellness, that type stuff, there's nothing better than a real book in front of you, I think. So those seem to have maintained their popularity. For a lot of the popular fiction or things that might get assigned in school, I think parents and caregivers, they're just going towards, you know, finding it as easy as they can on their phone to read to their children or to have their children read on tablets. So maybe that focus has shifted a little bit, you know? So our Harry Potters, for instance, still really popular, still have a huge waiting list in ebook form, you know, we can never get enough of them, it seems like. So yeah, that seems to be a good base, a good cores, is popular fiction, and then the biographies, fitness, wellness, cookbooks, those still seem to just, we can't keep them in the library.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh yeah, thank you.
I have a quick question. The Zip Books, do you return it by sending it back to Amazon, or?
You return it back to the library.
Okay.
So it can run a few different ways, the way it is now, bring it back in. We basically consider putting it into our regular collection, thinking that if it's popular with this person, it might be popular with someone else. So it's been a nice way to supplement some of the collection holes that we might have. I've noticed people, speaking of health and wellness, they might want the latest trendy diet book or something that's out there. And as far as the library goes, maybe there's not a nice, big hardcover version of it yet, but there might be an easier guide that we can find on Amazon. So our cooking collection, our language learning collection, stuff like that, is really getting filled out specifically with these books that come back. So it gets mailed to your home, and then you bring it back to the library.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nice program.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, thanks.
Any other comments about anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
I'm going to open up the Camarillo Sanitary District Board meeting. May the record reflect that all board members or all directors are present. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
And I don't have any public comment cards, no public comments. We're going to move down to consent calendar.
Move consent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can you please vote? Motion passes unanimously. Down to comments from staff. Do I have any comments from staff? Seeing none. Comments from board members at this time? Ms. Craven?
Yes, you might remember that when our last council meeting ended in the wee hours, I said I was heading out to the CASA conference in the desert. And I did. And the next morning, I attended the Legislative Committee meeting, which is why I wanted to get there then. There, I won't tell you about all the bills, but there's some things that I think are notable that CASA is working hard on, and where there's a spot bill that's been introduced. They found a senator and an assembly person to introduce it. It's called flushable wipes, and these are a real problem for a lot of sewage treatment The company started out, everything that came that you could pull out was supposed to be a flushable wipe, from Clorox wipes to hospital wipes. And a lot of those don't, didn't work out once they got past the pipes. Camarillo has, for your information, I found out from Lucy, invested, and I'm not sure how much, but invested in a different type of pump that has a grinder, so we can grind all these things up. And still, about every couple of months, we have plugs because of all these wipes. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that they no longer advertise them as flushable wipes, but as wipes and have, for ones that truly are, and there is an international standard, it'd be the toilet paper disintegration standard. If they do disintegrate and follow that standard, then they could be labeled as flushable wipes. But the rest would have to have labeling that said, "Do not flush." And this is a problem for almost every agency. Another thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was unintended consequences. And many years ago, everybody got behind the push to recycle everything. Reduce, reuse, recycle. So, you know, a big leader in stripping down soda pop bottles and making them into all those jackets that all of us wear was Patagonia, and there were a lot of other companies that took up the cause. And carpeting, although carpeting isn't such a problem. But what they're finding now is that all of these, I've got a paper here I'm supposed to be reading, all of these things start disintegrating. The more they're washed, the more they disintegrate. And so the plastic is getting into, down into the aquifers and into the drinking water, and they're having a lot of problems with having to now filter that out because they're carcinogens. And so that's another one that even though it is on the water side, and CASA is not usually on the water side, they've joined with Aqua on the push for microplastic chips that wash out and to start looking at other things that can be used, because this will be starting to cause all of the water agencies some problems. And then the third one was a report that I wanted to report to you. The new governor has, he started out, as you might remember, the very first day saying, "Oh, we're going to take all those transportation funds that people just voted to keep, and we're going to use them for housing." And then he got a backlash and found out that wasn't going to work. And so he's now saying that he wants to not do that. And one good thing is he wants to add dollars to the state's rainy day fund and pay down the state's retirement liability, which is, both of those are very good. The other thing that I think we need to keep looking at is that he has said, I don't think it was in his State of the State, but he has said in other forums that they're looking at adding taxes and fees to other things, so that especially this water tax of his, there are 100,000 people in the state who are not on public water systems, but who have wells, and many of them, well, I don't know how many are on wells, but there are 100,000 who have been documented as not having pure water in these rural areas. And he would like to add a statewide water tax to all of the rest of us to pay for cleaning up their water, the 100,000 people. And someplace I had how much, I guess I didn't write down how much that was going to cost. But I think we need to watch for these things, because I think at least we need to talk about them and talk about equity. We need to talk about, instead of just letting all the little taxes on things we do, if they're going to be passed through to us, we need to make sure we're aware of them and at least have a discussion and maybe take a position, maybe not, but we need to be aware of it. So that's my report from the CASA conference.
Ms. Kildy?
Yeah, I also attended the CASA conference with VRSD, but I'm going to be kind of brief, but there was a couple of sessions that I really felt interested in, and I know there's members up here that are very much versed on this, but it's the artificial intelligence that's out there that potentially could be used as a cost-saving measure. And what's happened, the person that was kind of leading this discussion is that with, let's see if I can get this right, with a lot of the conservation that, and that's a good thing, but they're not getting the amount of volume that's going through. And as we all know, that you base your rates on certain flows and volumes and whatnot. When that is predicted to be up here, and it's actually down here, then you've got, you know, you've got some issues there. So with the artificial intelligence and also with the drought, that the machinery is working just as hard, whether it's drought or not, and sometimes harder, and it's actually wearing out somewhat quicker than what it would when you have more of a consistent flow.
Because it's strength.
Yeah, because it doesn't, it's kind of like your engine, you know, they always, people think that, you know, the best engine is one that doesn't have a lot of miles on it, but engines actually work better when they're used every day. So what they're thinking about doing is with this artificial intelligence, if they have the technology now to either ramp it up or ramp it down, and it might be able to have some cost-saving measures as far as the overhead of, you know, running your system. So they're talking about that now, and apparently the technology is really close to being there. And I just found it really interesting that they have all these sensors, and they're kind of like our cars now, and none of us can work on our cars anymore, right? Because they've got all this sensors on them, but they're, that's also going into the lines and whatnot. And perhaps, as we know, it's expensive to replace this, you know, machinery and the lines too, so if there's a way that they can extend, you know, the life of it, that would be a really good thing too. So technology is hitting this industry as well. So I felt that was extremely interesting there. And, you know, for every action, there's a reaction kind of type thing, and it's definitely, you know, in what we do as well. So among other things, that was one of, that was actually two of the sessions, and there were some other, but I haven't been to one of these conferences in quite a while. And it's really interesting, and I really learned a lot there, so.
To draft off your comments, the Internet of Things and all the devices and the whole ecosystem that spawns, and open source mesh networks. I know I have my entire house wired with Internet of Things, little devices. I have them on every door, every window, I have them under every sink. It can detect links or leaks. I think the opportunity there, as we can plug that kind of technology in at a municipal level, could be really interesting. So particularly when it comes to conservation. I totally agree.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, you know, it's a technological world now, and it's interesting how that all, that all works and what we all attempt to do up here. Yeah.
Are there any other comments? No, seeing none. I'm going to, we are going to reconvene for our study session and in departmental, so I'm just going to recess the meeting now.
All right. I'd like to call the regular Camarillo City Council meeting for February 13th to order, please. Let the record reflect that all the council members are present. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
No amendments to this agenda? We don't have any presentations tonight, so that actually gets us down to consent calendar.
Move the approval.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, so that gets us down to item four. It's the City Council. It's the 2019 and '20 Council Goals and Objectives. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. On February 6th, the City Council met to review progress and achievement on its 2018-19, fiscal year 2018-19, Council Goals and Objectives, and to establish Council Goals and Objectives for fiscal year 2019-2020, which will begin on July 1st of this year. Before you is the draft of your goals and objectives as we recorded them for that evening. In 2018, for 2018-19, we had 10 goals and 21 objectives. And after council's discussion on February 6th, we still have 10 goals, but now we have 25 objectives. I really want to thank the council for really an incredibly good discussion on the goals and objectives, probably one of the best discussions I've heard from this council in a long time. And very cooperative, a lot of great discussion, and I think we ended up in a great place with these goals and objectives. Of the newer, all the goals stayed the same, the goal statements stayed the same from the previous year, but there are some notable objectives that I do want to briefly highlight. Under community enrichment, we added, explore various options for financially supporting the arts. That's a new one. Number five, under community enrichment, is support inclusivity in our community and identify opportunities for inclusive participation by all residents and city affairs. And number six, explore opportunities to foster an inclusive and accessible environment benefiting the city's senior population. Also notable, under land use and transportation, is encourage efforts by County of Ventura and California State University Channel Islands to create a bike trail from Cuyahoga Creek Bridge at Pleasant Valley Road to California State University Channel Islands. And then under economic development, we have aggressively implement the city's adopted Economic Development Strategic Plan, including the hiring of a full-time economic development specialist, whose sole focus is economic and business development through implementation of the plan. And then finally, I want to highlight, under community relations, three new objectives. Number one, consider open city hall or similar program for online community engagement. Number two, consider development of a comprehensive community engagement process similar to the City of San Luis Obispo Public Engagement and Noticing Manual. And number three, explore the implementation of periodic community meetings for the discussion of specific city-related issues. So council, the draft goals and objectives are before you for your consideration and adoption.
Any questions, Dave, at this time? Comments? Ms. Tremblay?
I want to compliment my colleagues on a really excellent meeting to consider our goals and objectives. I think that the time that we have spent doing that and the new objectives that we have arrived at are really commendable. I'm really pleased in particular on several new objectives. Some, and I know I've sounded like a broken record with prior, with the prior council on some of these, but particularly what I'm proud of in the community relation side is the consideration of the open city hall or a similar program for online engagement with the community. Open City Hall is a program that the City of San Luis Obispo implemented a few years ago. It is an online forum for civic engagement, and folks post what they believe or their positions relative to particular city topics, and then they, and then others, and then others come along and post their own statements. And then the city officials read the statements and incorporate them into, we incorporate them into our decision-making process. And I'm taking this directly from a summary of what the online engagement program is like. I think it's really important. The second is the Public Engagement and Noticing Manual, and I think what we are doing in this objective is to really are saying to the community, we want to look at this community engagement process from a comprehensive standpoint. It's just, as it says in It's just, as it says in, and City of San Luis Obispo uses it, it's a core component of how we provide our services to the public. The third thing, I am really pleased that we have an objective for aggressively implementing our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Goodness knows, we've been talking about this for a while, and most importantly, including the hiring of a full-time economic development specialist whose sole focus is to push our plan, because long after we're gone, the impacts of that effort are going to be, are going to hopefully resonate positively for citizens here. And we have a wonderful staff who is working on that now, but they have so many different things on their plate that I think this really merits, and we had this conversation last week, this really merits the hiring of a full-time person with that sole focus. And I don't want to forget that with regard to Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, we also amended that objective to say that together with the district, we're going to identify and evaluate various alternatives to finance the cost of construction and long-term maintenance of the new facilities that are anticipated, senior center, community recreation facilities. And I'm really pleased about that, and I'm proud of these objectives. So I want to thank my colleagues for spending such a long time in that meeting, but having a very, very good and fruitful discussion.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Ms. Craven?
Yeah, I too thought it was one of the better goal-setting sessions I've attended, and it certainly was the friendliest, and I didn't think you were, I didn't think you were hitting us over the hammer this year with your, with your San Luis Obispo things.
I hit you over the head last year.
Yeah, and so I was expecting that again, but it went, no, you didn't, you didn't. I mean, you did. You weren't as aggressive on it. We were aggressive on the strategic plan, the economic strategic plan, but I thought it went very well. I'm just kidding here. I am, I was very happy with the one where we, that we added, explore opportunities to foster an inclusive and accessible environment benefiting the city's senior population. And what I hope that, after that exploration, I hope that in another year or so, we will be working with the healthcare district, the Rec and Park District, Cal State Channel Islands, the Council on the Aging, and doing something to make sure this is a senior-friendly community and acknowledged as such. I think we have a lot of programs right now that are not really, that everybody doesn't know about, and that's what I hope the outcome of this will be. And finally, I want to remind everybody, especially those listening out there, that we're going to be adopting these goals. They'll be put into next year's budget, which begins July 1st, and these are the goals for the next fiscal year. They don't start right now.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll just add that, not knowing what I was walking into, I was pleasantly surprised, and I think it was, I think it was a good, healthy discussion, and I'm really glad of what came out as a result.
Yeah, I didn't know what to expect either, and it was, it was a little bit more of a relaxed setting that we could actually have conversation and discuss what, the things that we felt were important for our community. And I really enjoyed the night, so it's really great to hear this feedback, so thank you.
Yeah, let's make a quick comment. I think that, you know, we, these are comprehensive and I think well-thought-up, thought-out. I think it was interesting how, you know, we've always supported the arts, but I think it was important to put the arts in this, because my opinion is the arts can also be part of the economic development of a city too, that it could be tourist-related and many other things too. I know there's some terrific cities out there that do a lot of work with the arts in a lot of different ways, and it, the economies of scale come up a lot with this too. So anyhow, so it was a thorough discussion. We hit a lot of, a lot of issues here. It was productive, and I thank the Council for coming up with these, this list, which I think is important.
Mr. Mayor, may I have one more comment, and then I'll move.
Absolutely, Ms. Enley.
You know, these are, I would really, I really want the public to understand, these are goals and objectives that are aspirational, but at the same time, they offer a direct roadmap on where this city is going. So they are very specific, and when you read these goals and objectives, this is one of the most important meetings we have in the year, as far as I'm concerned, you know what direction this council is moving. So anybody who sits down and reads these says, okay, that's where this city council is moving towards. So they're very important. And with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Camerel City Council Goals and Objectives for Fiscal Year 2019-2020.
I'll second.
A motion to second and further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, that gets us down to Public Works. It's the Stormwater Administrative and Technical Services Amendment to Professional Services Agreement. Dave, will you be taking that one?
Yes, I have a short report on this, and to start out, actually, with those goals and objectives, some, most, all of them already in place this current fiscal year with these changes that you just adopted for next year, this item does directly repreach to one of those where the goal of to provide cost-effective and efficient services to the public. This is under Environment and Resource Management. So we have an ongoing agreement in place to provide those type of services directly related to our stormwater permit compliance. We have an existing agreement in place with Charles Abbott for Stormwater Administrative and Technical Services, and a quick summary of those services include responding to illicit discharges, continual water quality monitoring and reporting that is required from our, under our permit, a new development plan review, ensuring compliance with the storm, city stormwater ordinance, processing correspondence and public outreach to businesses and the industrial, construction, and residential communities, tracking all stormwater compliance and generating reports. There's a significant annual reporting element of compliance with our stormwater permit that's required each year. So Charles Abbott has been performing these administrative and technical services for us, and their contract was extended previously to the end of this fiscal year, and we have had a longer-than-expected vacancy in the city's stormwater manager position, and additional services with Charles Abbott to continue what they are doing under this agreement is required. And that will take us through the end of this fiscal year. Staff is starting to work on an RFQ, an eventual RFP process for the next request for qualifications and enter into the next agreement that we would have in place for these type of stormwater services. Sufficient funds for these services are available from personnel cost savings, and we're ready to consider that amendment to the agreement, and that concludes my report. And available for questions.
Any questions, Ms. Craven?
You said this is due to a longer-than-expected vacancy in the stormwater management's, or part of it is, position. Are we planning to hire a new person there? Have we advertised?
Yes, yes, we are. We went through one recruitment process with the outcome of not, not selecting, not filling that position, and we are looking at that job classification, and it's given us an opportunity to see what other positions out in the, in the stormwater community do and their classifications so that we can appropriately recruit again. So we do plan to fill that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Enley?
Mr. Klotzel, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the amounts here. And I know that Charles Abbott Associates does an excellent job for the city, but the way I read the staff report is, it makes it appear that we are spending about 40, if I'm correct, we're going to be spending about $174,000 for a four-month period. In other words, that runs out to somewhere around 40, 43, 44, 45,000 bucks a month. Is that accurate?
So the way the math works out based on where we are today, yes. In saying that, as the first paragraph under the discussion mentioned, the First Amendment that we took in March of last year extended the agreement through this fiscal year for that amount not to exceed 197,712. That includes some of the management and technical services that are to be performed all year, and actually, it was soon after this that we had the vacancy and weren't able to fill that. So we essentially utilized, then it's technically the same services that they're going to continue to provide in that absence, but we started essentially requiring more hours, you know, at the early part of last, actually even before the end of last fiscal year. So we're essentially backfilling some of that cost that we've already incurred, but that cost that we've already incurred was covered by the existing agreement in place with the existing authority for that expenditure. I don't know if I confused things more or not, but.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to keep up with you, because.
So the original extension covered the normally typical anticipated costs, and then we entered into this fiscal year with costs above and beyond that, and on the, on the year's total, that's where we need the additional 173,000. So technically, that 173,000 of the, for the Second Amendment is really spread over the whole, this whole fiscal year.
It's not just focused in, the staff report makes it appear that, oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's correct, not, not just for the four months.
As a four-month expenditure, it circles back. And then you also have a situation where, you know, we had a stormwater manager, city staff person for a portion of the time, because it's, the way, the way I read the staff report, it looked like it was, we were spending $197,000 for 15 months with city staff in place, plus Charles Abbott.
No, that vacancy occurred in April of 2018.
I just wanted to make sure I, okay, but that's the, that's the inference that I got when I read it.
All right, apologize for that.
Well, it's okay, I'm not, but I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. Okay, so we're basically reaching back.
Correct.
Relative to these expenses. Okay.
Anything else? Ms. O'Shea, did you hear something?
Yeah, I want to clarify the questioning that Mrs. Craven was asking too. So this is, we're doing this because of a vacancy, right, and the loss of that manpower, so to speak. Do, at the end of this fiscal year, do we anticipate continually contracting that position out into the future, or do we expect to hire someone in-house?
We expect to go through another recruitment and hire that position back in-house.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Sorry, I want to follow it. Is this cost comparative or comparable to what we would be paying someone in-house?
Good question. I'm not, it's probably close. Yeah, I'd dollar it all, or I don't have, you know, the exact.
It's around, it's around there.
Right.
It's more or less a push, yeah.
It is, and we identified salary benefits savings in the personnel line item about equivalent to this amendment.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I'll move the approval of this item.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right, that gets us down to La Sposas Bike Lane, CML 5393, Professional Services Agreement. Do we have a staff report on that? Would that be you again, Dave?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'll be giving that report with a short presentation. We have a PowerPoint prepared on that. And again, to introduce this topic, a direct relation to a council goal, one of them, the goal under land use and transportation, to plan appropriate land uses, streets, and bikeways. So this item is directly related to the next step with implementing one section of bikeway. And on the screen, we have the city's bicycle network and which shows the planning efforts and the results of the implementation over the years of creating a bikeway and bicycle network. And one of the other goals actually that was mentioned in working with the county and the Channel Islands is shown on the extension here of the Caiaguas Bike Path, and so we do actually reflect that, and it has been reflected in our planned bikeway element. Again, it's outside of city limits, so we will be playing a supportive role, coordinating role in that. There will be some connectivity work to be done at the bridge. So in summary, this map shows, let's see, it's four different classes that we show on this map. Those, that green, the Caiaguas Bike Path is the primary one, is what we call Class One Bike Path. That is a separated facility. There's no vehicular traffic on those facilities. It's a designated bike path, often combined with pedestrian, which ours are. And then, so that's on the Caiaguas Creek Bike Path, and then there's an extension of that off of Caiaguas Creek through the park, at Village at the Park, and that extends over. Now it's connected all the way out to the intersection of Pettit and Village at the Park. In Dash, like I mentioned, for the extension down to the university, we show future facilities under each of these classes of bike lanes, with some additional Class One in green dashed here. We have efforts ongoing in preliminary design for Class One Bike Path for connectivity through the Springville area, eventually from La Sposas Road out to Central Avenue. Next class of bike lane is what's called Class Two, and that is where a designated striped, signed, and marked bike lane is included in the vehicle, in the pavement section out on the street. So separate from the vehicle lanes, but a designated bike lane. That's in red, and again, with some additional dashed reds planned for in the future on some of the long-range planned arterials. And you can see the majority of arterials, of our arterials do have Class Two Bike Lanes. Then we get into Class Three. It's a bike route. Those are routes that are designated on existing streets where bikes are, it's signed, and bikes would use the, share the road with vehicles. So those are shown in yellow. And then we do have one area of what we call a shoulder route out on Crestview from Valley Vista out through Spanish Hills. So that is a, off, on the shoulder paved area for bikes to use. So that is an overview of our bicycle network, and the item before you tonight is considering a project down at the south end of La Sposas Road. Essentially, it's 500 feet. Here's the aerial view of the location. We have Pleasant Valley Road, La Sposas Road, the airport over here on the west side of La Sposas, and it's for the southerly 500 feet of the southbound direction on La Sposas Road. And here's an aerial view showing the existing city bike lanes here shown in blue. We have from Ventura Boulevard all the way down to Pleasant Valley on the east side or northbound direction, we have an existing, that's a Class Two Bike Lane. It's striped and signed as bike lane. And on the southbound side, on the west side airport side, we have a bike lane from Ventura Boulevard down to this point, essentially about 500 feet north of the intersection with Pleasant Valley. The reason for the termination of that is the roadway, the available roadway width for the bike lane narrows too much to be able to designate it as a Class Two Bike Lane. It's too narrow. There still is pavement on the right side of the white shoulder, so a bike could travel there. However, as we get down to the, with the existing width of La Sposas here, where we have the right turn lane, a through lane, and a dedicated left turn lane, the pavement width there does not allow for wide enough pavement for a striped bike lane. So this project is to add in the pavement width necessary to be able to complete the connectivity of the southbound bike lane down to Pleasant Valley Road. Again, part of the city's goal, and every time we're doing road projects, and these, this project along with another one I'll mention in a minute have been programmed in our CIP to further the connectivity and completion of our bikeway network. One of the outcomes of this will be, again, further connectivity to existing bike lanes which are in the county on Pleasant Valley Road heading west from this intersection. There are bike lanes on Pleasant Valley Road. Heading south on La Sposas Road, there's currently Class Two Bike Lanes heading south also. This will provide connectivity there. And then we also have a future bike lane project that is in our CIP and is in the, a little bit earlier stage than we are here on this La Sposas Road. We are working towards hiring an engineer also on the, for the Pleasant Valley Bike Lanes. So this is within city limits. City limits here jog at Pleasant Valley, La Sposas, to where city now picks up, this is our right-of-way on Pleasant Valley Road that continues over to right at the railroad tracks where actually Fifth Street comes up, which turns into, just for a small stretch there, Pleasant Valley Road is Caltrans, it's Route 34. So this future city bike lane on Pleasant Valley would go from La Sposas Road east over to Fifth Street. So again, plans in place in our CIP to complete and connect our bike lanes as much as possible to one another in the city and also other regional bike lanes in the county. Summary of the total estimated project cost, and I mentioned it is programmed in our CIP, this project has, I've been identified for some time, and we have secured $650,000 in federal grants. That's under the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Funding Source, or CMAC, at $650,000. And then there is a match requirement for that, and the, we'll be using. And then there is a match requirement for that, and the, we'll be using city traffic mitigation funds for that match, and 150,000 needed for that estimated, again, to be determined in the, in the future when we get to construction what that total overall cost is, but right now we're programming $800,000. And with a match from the traffic mitigation funds, this project has been identified and is listed in our traffic mitigation fee program, so those funds are available for use there. Summary of the efforts coming up is, tonight's action is to hire a consultant to move into the design phase, and the action tonight is for $163,000 contract with the consultant, additional $25,000 for contingency for unknowns under this phase of the design, for a total authorization of an agreement tonight for $188,000. That's a portion, the majority of, a portion of the design phase, which we've estimated total possibly at 250,000. One of the consequences or results of having federal funding is a very extensive process through Caltrans who administers those funds for review and approval of our project and in authorization of the funds. This is a very extensive process. Caltrans is requiring more and more studies and reports needed for these projects as we go through, and the exact effort and dollar amount on those. We've estimated some of them included the initial steps in our, in our contract agreement that we're going forward with hopefully tonight. However, there likely will be additional efforts required in the design phase, is why we show estimate of $250,000 in design. Again, timing, we're going to get started on this design effort, timing through Caltrans for approval, not totally known yet, we're estimating through this year at least and possibly into 2020, and then moving into the construction phase with right now ballpark estimate of 550,000 for this, for this project, with construction anticipated possibly in 2020 and possibly into 2021, again, depending on that final approval process through Caltrans. Basic project is to widen the pavement far enough to allow the bike lane to make this connectivity, and there is a ditch there. There's right-of-way constraints that we'll need to analyze, so that's where some of the, you know, the refinement of the construction costs will be known as we go through design to see what's really required to do this. I will mention this project has, I already did, it's been in the CIP, the timing has always been ahead of the widening of the Las Poses Road project, and we've recently had some discussion on that project, and we're actually under conceptual design right now with a consultant. And everything we do for this project, for the bike lane, will be able to be utilized for that future widening when that occurs at that time. So, you know, we're, whatever's done out there as a part of this project essentially will not be throwaway, it will be there for eventual use for the future widening at that time. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Craven?
Yeah, the, I think I heard you say, but I just want to make sure, the 200,000 in CMAC funds have already been allocated for the design?
Yes.
Okay. And then looking at the, just, you know, bringing to mind the, the landscape out there, is there any chance that that ditch could be covered and put this over there? I can remember the, Mela Roos built the ditch.
In, in theory, it could be, you know, and I would say that would probably come more into the discussion of the ultimate widening, the, the requirements that are going to be in place to accomplish the additional lane for the bike lane. We don't, you know, it, it may impact the ditch somewhat, it's going to be an extremely costly project to essentially underground that ditch.
Okay. And then this is just for something, I don't know what, but my very first night when I was installed as a city council member, we didn't have a special meeting then, we just did it at, at the beginning of the meeting. And one of the items on that agenda was to adopt, or to go out to bid for Camarillo's Bike Plan. And we selected a company about a year later, and five years after that, I think we adopted, we got our bike plan back from them. It's a company in Pasadena, it took a long time, but I've always been very supportive, I can support this tonight.
Any other questions? Ms. Craven, Craven?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Klotzloch, I've got a number of questions on this contract. So let me just start off by saying that I support bike lanes, and I understand the concept of the federal matching dollars, and that, that's good. But I've got some problems with the proposed costs here. The first thing is, I want to know whether or not the tasks, the specific tasks that are set forth in the scope of services, because that's what I drill down on, are any of those duplicative of the tasks with regard to the widening project? And specifically, I'm asking about the environmental tasks, which is task number three in this contract. It looked to me like there may, it looked to me like there may be some duplication with what the prior council approved on the Las Poses Road six-lane widening project item a few months ago. And remember that a lot of that, the reason I voted for that is I wanted information on the environmental side that would assist us in responding to the county's plan for expansion of, of airport operations. So, sorry, let me circle back. Are any of these tasks duplicative? Because they appear to me to be.
Yeah, without the actual scope for the widening in front of me, and I may need to defer to Ken to help me out possibly a little bit here, but I believe the, the widening scope is not getting into the level of detail on the environmental side of things at this point for the conceptual study. So we're not going into preliminary design or even final design on the, on the conceptual study.
But when I voted for that item a few months ago, my understanding was that some of the work product that would be delivered by virtue of that project was going to assist us and respond, assist the city in responding to the county's environmental documentation with regard to expansion of airport operations.
Do you want to leave it? Dave, do you want to leave it?
Yeah, I guess I'm not, it wasn't real clear that it was specifically on the environmental response to the county's. It was mainly focused on what widening requirements may have an impact on their projects. And then definitely anything that either, either of these projects can produce to help each other, and this one's going to be going first, will, if there is something out of this project that can support the conceptual study, then definitely we'll be able to utilize that.
Well, let me step back. I mean, do you want to leave it? I didn't.
Ken.
Ken has a.
And do you want to make a statement first before we get to?
My name's Ken Matsuka with Capital Projects and Public Works. The environmental that's related for this bike lane project is specific to this project, and it's going to be for the Caltrans process. So it's, it's very detailed, related to the Caltrans process, and that's, that's required for what we're, what we're doing here with this one, for the grant funds. Now, the other, the other project is going to be a very broad, rough look at things. It's not, it's not this detailed look. This is for final design in this, this contract. So we, we did have some items that were overlapping, like the aerial survey, that sort of thing, but the survey that's in this one is going to be ground survey, detailed ground survey. So we will be using the aerial survey off of the other project because that way we can save costs, that sort of thing. So we, we will try to do everything to reuse pieces, but some of these are Caltrans-specific, and we have to do them to, to get the grant funds.
Well, thanks for that, Ken, but let me step back for a minute. I mean, some of the work that's being done by this, and this is the same consultant who's also working on the, the six-lane widening project. One of the deliverables coming out of that are, is going to be enough environmental information for the city to respond to the county's initial study and environmental assessment documents, because they want, as I understood, the county very ambitiously is looking to do a joint sequin NEPA process. And would you agree that the, the, some of the information that's coming to us on the six-lane widening project work that this consultant is already doing is going to be of assistance in having the city respond relative to some environmental issues regarding that, correct?
I think the difference is that one is more of a traffic study type thing, and this is more related to just the, the construction of a bike lane, and they're not, they're not overlapping. They're, we wouldn't really be doing a, a traffic study related to the bike lane.
Well.
And then if I could add on to that also, and I believe the other, say, the cultural resources, the Native American scoping, those items that, if they are in others, maybe a part of the airport project, is going to be accomplished through their environmental efforts, and we're not necessarily going to be feeding direct information in for them to be able to use that in a part of their process.
Except that those are optional tasks in this contract that's before us. If you look at big page, if you look at big page seven, those, those tasks are listed. I, I think the, 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 the big problem I have with this contract is that there is $93,000 under task three for environmental documentation, but there's no breakout. It just seems like a very large amount of money for what is being done, which is in essence, they're working with Caltrans Senior Environmental Planner, they're doing an initial site assessment checklist, there's some project management, and that's costing $93,000 with no breakout of what those costs are. And I, that doesn't sit well with me in terms of the efficiency. So I guess the other thing I would note too is that, you know, we're going to do our mid-year budget review later on in the, on our agenda tonight, and if the council would look on big page, it's, it's Roman section 19A9, under the mid-year budget review, there's an increase of approximately $225,000.
What page?
Big page nine on Roman, Roman 19.
Sorry.
That's right, big page, big page nine, and it's got Las Poses Road Bike Lanes for our project ST 5001 with an adopted budget of 525,000, an amended budget of 754,172. I'm not sure that I can reconcile that increase, maybe I've got oranges and apples, so help me, Ken or Dave, I'm not sure I can reconcile that increase with what we got going here. And again, I'm mindful of the, I'm mindful of the federal grant and the matching monies, but I can't reconcile this. Can you help me?
On, on the mid-year item, I'm not too sure what that amended budget number, where that comes from.
What that is, is we start off with the adopted budget that the council approves in June of each year. As the closeout of the fiscal year, we roll over any remaining balances of, of projects or contracts that are rolled over to the next year. So it, we automatically will be increasing some of those budgets based on those CIP budget rollovers for either encumbrances or.
Oh, okay, Gina, then that's just, that's rollover money, so this is, that's oranges and apples.
Right.
Right, we're not, the, the amended budget is just the change between what you adopted and then the year-end closeout process. For mid-year, we're beginning, we're going to be considering any adjustments which are in the farther column to the, to the right, which, and if you look at that, there is no recommended change for this project.
Okay. Just to go back then on this, thanks for that clarification, that helps. So just on this project though, it's 162,000, but $93,000 is for task three environmental, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
Yeah, a few questions. I had, I had some concerns over the cost for less than 500 feet, $800,000, even though I know 650 of it would be subsidized through a federal grant, just seems like a lot of money for a bike lane. I like me a good bike lane because I like cycling, I've cycled this road quite a bit. In terms of that, I had a, could you go back to the slide where showed the, the overhead, the map? Or not, not the bike lane map, yeah, that one. So I, I was going to ride this this weekend just to get a feel for it, but it was raining, and I didn't think that was advisable, so I drove it five times instead.
Well, then we need the air quality grant.
Yeah. My one concern though is, is where the city line ends and the county line begins, and our widening of the bike lane can only go up to the, to, was it, I don't know if that line is how accurate that the black line is, the, of the, the city, is that?
The city limit line? That's fairly accurate.
Fairly accurate. So if we, would we be going right up to that line then? Or from, from what I have here in the, in the staff handout, it seems like it'd be recessed back.
It, it possibly could be recessed back, that's part of this design effort is to, and as you see in the other bike lanes, especially over here, they are recessed back because of the limitations of actually having more lane width than you've probably experienced where, and I call it a chute, when you come up to an intersection, if the bike lane continues, there's actually some, usually a dashed line for right turners to go, and then there's a four-foot minimum is what the Caltrans standard admitted, is a four-foot bike lane chute that takes you up essentially to the crosswalk if there's a crosswalk there. If there's not enough road width to accomplish that, then the standard is to terminate the bike lane ahead of the intersection, sign it, and then it's essentially open lanes for bikes and vehicles to traverse through the intersection. And that, we have some of that around on our arterials as well. So the design effort will determine if there's a possibility for extending, and I, I would say it's probably less likely than, than likely that we'd be able to accomplish that here with the existing lane widths without even costing more than our estimated costs. So the idea would likely be that it would terminate back here. Again, we'll, we'll extend it as far as we can.
There's a slight concern I have, the other concern being in, in, in making the turn, was it south, where you going? South on Las Poses to west on Pleasant Valley. If it executes there, the, the county bike lane, or what, the bike lane in county land, doesn't pick up till well after that turn. So if people are going to, to transition, you know, make that turn, essentially they're without a bike lane, and now they're going to be one-on-one with a car. I'm just concerned with, this is a good effort, but it doesn't, in what, in what coordination do we have with the county to where they can, we can bring ours to the line and they'd be able to bring a bike lane to, their bike lane to the line?
Right.
That is an area that we will be looking at during design. It's something that we've already been discussing, but it's an area we'll have to look at during design.
Excited, my, my biggest concern is I don't know how, what good this really does if one, it doesn't allow for the chute, and or two, it doesn't allow for a safe passage of that, of that turn. Because those are two things I'd be most concerned about as a cyclist. Where our bike lane kind of, where it narrows right now, that's where I would, if I was going to continue straight down Las Poses, that's when I would start to transition over in between the two lanes in order to go, to go straight. So, you know, I don't, I wouldn't have too much of an issue with it. I just, I don't know, my biggest issue is that for the cost, I don't know if there's necessarily that big of a benefit for a cyclist. I mean, I'm looking at it from the prism of my own viewpoint, I would still, it doesn't mitigate enough for me in many respects. Maybe you can address that, or I don't know, put me ideas or something.
Well, I mean, as Ken said, what we need to do is look at it in design, really to make the decision now whether or not we can go forward with any better connectivity or that chute down to the intersection, we, we just don't know until we look at it in the design. And we'll be bringing this back to council before, obviously, before we finalize design and award a construction contract, and we can report back on that.
My other concern is to do it right, I'm afraid it's a multimillion-dollar bike lane for like 500 feet, and as much as I like a bike lane, I don't know if that's, we should be spending a mil, over a million dollars on, so.
Okay. Well, anybody else? Susan?
Can I go back to the tasks that Mr. Trembley was talking about? And when they say that they're optional, what, what are they, what is the option? What is that based on?
They're, they're actually included in the price, but they will not be done unless Caltrans demands that they be done. There's a. There's a process for Caltrans to require us to do certain studies. We've included the price in here, but we don't, we hope we don't have to do all the studies. There actually may be some more, but we've made a reasonable guesstimate as far as which ones we would be doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Mr. Tremblay?
Responding to...
Oops. You turned it off, yeah. There we go, turned it off. Responding to Sean's question, you know, I, and I certainly understand that. I think as a preliminary threshold matter, I'm still not comfortable with the cost here, and I'm not comfortable with the lack of any task breakdown. So much as I support the concept of bike lanes, and I recognize it's for a purely short, short amount of roadway, I can't support this unless I get some more information regarding the breakout of costs. And I recognize, I think Susan's question is right on, but I still don't really have any idea what this is going to cost. I mean, particularly in terms of the, particularly in terms of the primary tasks, which are the preliminary environmental study, the initial site assessment checklist, and then project management. That's not going to be anywhere near $93,000, shouldn't be. So respectfully, I'm going to oppose this unless I get more information.
Let me ask a question here, maybe you can specifically, so staff will know exactly what you want. I want to remind the council that every time you get a federal grant, there's tremendous red tape that comes along with it, and anything that we do as a public project is going to be expensive. It can be much more expensive than if we went and did it ourselves, so we have to take that into consideration. I think your point is well-intended, but perhaps there's some information that staff might be able to share tonight that might make you somewhat more comfortable.
Perhaps.
Yeah. Is there anything, Dave?
Well, not on the details of cost breakdown. I suppose, it sounds like what's being requested is under optional Task One, to put a dollar amount after that, and optional Task Number Two, to put an estimated dollar amount after that, adding up to the sum total of the $93,000. We could go through that effort and bring it back.
Would that make you more comfortable if that was the case?
One approach here, I keep turning off the mic, sorry. One approach here may be to make a motion to table this item and have it brought back to us once the additional task breakdowns and costs are in there. So I'm prepared to make that motion.
Let me ask staff one other question, Mr. Tremblay, if you wouldn't mind. Is this time-specific? Do we have enough time for the grant and whatnot to get some more information on this?
We can get back, we can do that. We can come back at a later date to bring this back to council after we get the breakdown.
So could I ask for further clarification on the exact details of that information, so we know what we're preparing?
Yeah, maybe you can ask some further clarification, so staff will know exactly what we need to bring.
Well, I'd like a, I would like a complete task breakout of those tasking elements set forth on big page 11. You know, there's set forth tasks one through six, and then an item marked ODC. And I'd like to know what comprises those tasks. So that would be my, that would be my request.
So the description of those tasks is provided on the previous big pages?
But I have no way to, I have no way to relate, well, for example, on Task Three, I have no way to relate that to the sum of $93,000.
Okay, so, right, and so applying a dollar amount under optional Task Three, Native American scoping, is what we're after?
I'd like to have, I'd like to have a cost breakout, Mr. Klotzel, of every single task under Task Number Three, every single subtask, and what that might cost.
Okay.
Does that?
Understood.
Is that, okay, all right. So...
Just on three? Well, it's the largest.
Before you make your motion.
Oh, I'm not going to make a motion yet. I think, but I think Mrs. Craven asked me a question, and I think Mr. Moushey was on too.
Just, just on Task Three?
No. My, I would like to have a specific tasking amount on each, I'm sorry, a specific cost number on each task and each subtask, not just Task Three.
So one through six?
Uh-huh. And the OD, whatever the ODC is, I'm sorry, I don't remember that off the top of my head. It's an acronym.
Other direct, other direct costs?
Like copying, things like that.
Printing, copying.
Oh, okay. Well, that's an easy one. I don't need to know how many copies.
Okay.
A lot of it will be electronic.
Susan had a question, please.
Just going to play devil's advocate. If, if we're breaking down the optional tasks, yet we don't know ahead of time which of the optional tasks we're going to have to do, what, how does it help us to decide?
How does the, I mean, how does the additional information help us?
Just to know that that could be the total cost, which, I mean, we can break it down, but we're not going to know if we need to do one, two...
Well, for example, for example, I don't know if we're paying, I don't know if we're paying, and this is, this is a stretch, but I don't know if we're paying $40,000 to $45,000 for initial site assessment checklist. I'd like to know how much we're paying for each of these tasks, so I guess my response would be, without that information, I've got no way of ascertaining to myself from a policy standpoint whether that's reasonable.
Okay.
That, that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Moushey?
Yeah. In the, some of the concerns I raised, is there a way to where we can work to address those in coming back to council without going through the study? In any way? To any extent?
So, I mean, specific to how far south...
How we can make this more effective, more, you know?
We could have a, you know, conceptual preliminary design step to bring it back. I would, you know, it could be a, and it's up to the council to decide, a council item or a study session, to bring forth what information we do have at a preliminary step before taking any further step.
Wait, do we normally talk to, in like, in a situation like this, would we normally talk to the county, or at least reach out and make a phone call and say, hey, we're looking at pursuing this? Would you guys, on your end, be willing to meet us at the line, so to speak?
Right, yeah.
You know, on this project in some way?
That's normal, that we coordinate at the boundaries when we have projects. Yeah.
That's typically during the design phase.
Can we make a phone call beforehand?
We wouldn't have much information, so that's the, that's the concern.
Okay.
We can certainly make the phone call and discuss, but without much information, I don't know what we would do.
Yeah, I don't know how to incorporate this into a portion of this motion, because I don't exactly know where my concerns lie in the process, or being, you know, where they, where they can be addressed, whether they can be addressed prior to the process to some extent, or they have, we have to start the process and get into the thick of it in order to...
Right. As Ken alluded to, to have a meaningful discussion with the county, we need further information that comes out of a design effort.
Well, I, you know, we're not going to be able to get there until we do the study, right?
Right.
And the study's going to cost a lot of money to do the study. But we're not going to get any valuable, at least as much valuable information as we could without doing the study. Is that correct?
Right.
So if we want to break down some of the costs here on the, and know exactly, you know, Task One to Six, we can certainly do that. But to get into a lot of in-depth right now without doing the study, we're probably not going to be able to shed a lot of light on that.
How about we just keep it more simple than that? Why don't we just simply say that, assume for sake of discussion that we table this item and ask that it come back to us. Preceding that, can we have some indication from staff about any discussions with county staff, at least touching base on this, on these issues, and coming back to us with any thoughts that, any additional thoughts you have and county staff have? So we, so we're acting in the most efficient way possible. And it could be that, you know, there isn't much more to add, but at least we try to address this. And you may well say to us, hey, we can't do any more, we can't have any more effort. I just, I really, you know, aside from the task, aside from the tasking cost and the lack of a breakdown, I'm concerned about duplication of effort, and I don't want to see that. So anything that you can do to, and efficiency, and so anything you can do to help that will be helpful to me. Does that, I don't know if that gets to where you're going.
No, no, that's, that's fair enough, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so staff, do you, do you come back with what we're...
Yeah, I haven't heard the motion yet, so I, well, we'll do whatever the motion is, obviously.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. Okay, so my mic is just turning off. Maybe that's a good thing. Non-volitionally, I'll make a motion that we, we table this item and ask that it be brought back to the council at the, at the earliest, earliest possible time.
With what?
How about I just leave it that we ask that the item be tabled? Oh, we, with what, with what we've been talking about?
I think that they need more information exactly as to what they, you want them to bring it back, and not just bring it back as it is.
All right, I, all right, let me try it again. I'll, I'll move that the item be tabled, that staff come back at the earliest possible time to the council with additional specific information on Exhibit A, the scope of services, including but not limited to cost breakouts for each and every task and subtask that the consultant is proposing, and that, prior to staff coming back, that there be a discussion with county staff regarding county's intentions in this, in this area, and what the county is doing, to see if we can have some discussion about whether or not we can, we want to make sure that the, that our efforts and the county's efforts are not being duplicated. Does that get to where you are? That would be my motion.
Could I ask for a little clarification on that, and mentioning the county?
Sure.
Because there has been discussions on what's happening on the airport side of things, and versus one county you're specifically talking about, and it would be the Transportation Department having to do with their bike lane and connectivity and that item.
Then I would ask the discussion be with both the county Transportation Department as well as the airport, as well as the airports department, both. I'd like to just get a clearer picture of what's going on out here.
So timeframe on that, Dave, what are we, what realistic are we talking about here? And I bring that up because of the grant.
Oh, right. Impacts on the grant, it won't have an effect on that as far as coming back, likely not the next meeting, but in, we'll shoot for a meeting in March.
Okay, there's a motion. Did I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
There's a motion, seconding further discussion on this. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Now, I know we're past the six, we do have one other item. Mr. City Manager, would you like to try to take this?
Actually, Mayor, given the lateness of where we are in our study session period, we really do need to get to study session.
Okay, can you stay for, till the 7:30?
No, we're asking a lot. They would prefer not to. I mean, if council will forbear for another five minutes, we can get through this next item.
What's the council's will?
Let's go.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to get down to City Managers, Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Community Event Funding Agreement for the Summer Concert Series. Do you have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is for funding for the 2019 Summer Concert Series, foreign amount not to exceed $60,000, to be used in a community event funding agreement between the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District and the city to co-produce this concert series. What we are proposing is a four-concert, summer concert series, using the city's funding and the district's event expertise. As seen in Exhibit B of the agreement attached to this staff report, the district has estimated its cost to produce the four concert series to be approximately $51,400, which includes expenditures for district staffing costs, onsite security during the concerts, performer fees, stage lighting, sound, marketing materials, and signage. The city would be expending approximately $8,300 for porta-potties, fencing, safety lighting, and venue preparation, as seen in Exhibit C. While the district's estimated production cost is anticipated to be about $51,400, this is the first year that the district will be producing this concert series. To ensure that the district is not out of pocket for any unanticipated production costs, for example, if the sound and lighting contracts are more than anticipated, or, or the hiring of bands is more than we have budgeted, an additional $9,000 in funding that the city would have otherwise used to help the CAC with their concert series is being made available to PVRPD to ensure that they are not at financial risk in this new venture. District staff, PVRPD district staff is actively working with community partners and soliciting sponsorships or donations for the event. What I have, what we have proposed for you is, when those sponsorships and donations come in, how they will be dispersed and used to defray cost of, of the city for its cash outlay, and, and then any additional expenses that the district may bear that our $60,000 isn't covering. I don't anticipate that happening, but this is an insurance policy for both of us. Both staffs have worked to analyze available dates for the concerts to avoid conflicts with major community events, and so we have, we are proposing the dates, the dates that have been chosen that aren't in conflict with other events are Saturday, June 29th, Saturday, July 27th, Saturday, August 24th, and Saturday, September 21st. In its, in a previous study session, the city council did change the chair and blanket policy, so instead of putting out chairs and blankets to mark territory and reserve it, on Thursday at 5:00 PM, it's been pushed back to Friday at 5:00 PM. And, but no monitor or other security will be in attendance to ensure that blankets and chairs are undisturbed once they are left in the park, and that comes at the risk of those who placing them. And neither the city nor the district will bear any responsibility for items left unattended in the park. Signs will be placed in the park describing the new policy, and then we'll put that on on social media and other marketing materials. As many in the community have seen, the district has begun crowdsourcing the community's musical preferences, and that survey, which has been out in both electronic and paper form, will be open until February 18th, and then those results will be tabulated, and then the results from that survey will guide the district's choices of musical acts for the concert season. The district board has taken action on the proposed amendment, and they adopted it without any amendments. And so now it's before the city council to take action.
Any questions? I know we do have a representative from the district. Do you have anything to add to that, or? Okay, is there any questions of...
Just one.
Mr. Moushey?
This is just for one-year term.
That's correct.
Okay. And then after this, then we'll, we'll take it from there.
We'll revisit it again.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, comments? Would like to start off with comments? Mr. Tremblay, would you like to start off? Could you please put your microphone on?
It's not, it's not going on.
Oh, dear. Would you like to use mine?
Now it's going. It's sending me a message. I enthusiastically support this item, and I want to send out great kudos to the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District and to city staff who have worked very hard on this collaboration. And I think it's, I think it's representative of the increased collaboration that the city and the district are having these days, and I really appreciate PVRPD and city staff coming forward and doing this. So that's the extent of my comments.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry, I had one more.
There's a community survey out there, if anybody's listening, sorry, Mrs. Craven. You have until February 18 to go online at the PVRPD website, and I think there's a link on the city's website, to take the survey and indicate what type of music you would like to see. I took it the other night, and it was really fun to take. So I would encourage anybody listening who hasn't yet taken the survey to take it.
I think Mr. Tremblay said it all, and I do appreciate the work that city staff and the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District staff have done on this, and I appreciate their taking it up. And in, with time in mind, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a community event funding agreement with the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District in an amount not to exceed $60,000 in funding, and approximately $8,330 in direct services and in-kind staffing support for the co-production of the 2019 Summer Concert Series.
There's a motion in a second. One question before we vote, this is not part of the motion. I did have a conversation with the metal arcs, I don't know if you've reached out to them. They do, they did give, I believe, a grant of $3,000 last year, they're willing to consider it, that's the good news. The not-so-good news... The not-so-good news, you got to get a hold of them by tomorrow, no later than Friday. So I can give you the information. Okay, there is a motion on this. There's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to recess into our study session. We'll be back at 7:30. Thank you for being patient. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting to order, please. And Ms. Madeline, why don't you take a roll, if you would, please?
Councilmember Santangelo. Councilmember Molche.
Present.
Councilmember Craven.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tremblay.
Present.
Mayor Kildie.
Here.
Okay, we're going to do a flag salute. Mr. Molche, could you lead us tonight, please?
Please stand. Hand over heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to this part of the agenda?
No amendments.
Do not have any presentations. It gets us down to public comments. I do have one, oh, I've got, I've got cards here. Let me turn the mic on. First is Matt Lorimer. Matt here tonight? Okay.
Matt Lorimer, I have some comments tonight. I flew in from Texas. I think we need a police substation. I talked about that in the past. I also think we need a bike patrol, and not just when a crime occurs. It should be fully funded, should be a two- or four-man crew, so that's something to think about. Another thing I want to talk about, I noticed on the city record, we're talking about dignity health. I think that was corporate welfare, to give them a half a million dollars. That company makes a lot of money. They didn't need a half a million dollars. Taxpayers get nothing for it, and by the way, it seems they're going to owe a million dollars because an employee sued. Very bad. The next thing I want to talk about is the city website here on Facebook. We seem to have a problem. We have censorship. The city does not allow comments. Now, words are banned up to 1,000. I know the city manager's probably going to say, oh, well, this is just to let people know what's going on. Well, if you're going to do that, you have press releases, you have your own personal website. You know, I think it's really wrong when you have any form of censorship. If you can't take criticism, you shouldn't be in office. So that should definitely be looked at. It's really un-American to have any type of city function and say, by the way, we don't want your comments, and we're going to ban words, we're not going to do it. It's ridiculous, it shouldn't be happening, and it's unbelievable. I'm talking about it in the United States of America. Next thing I want to talk about, the clean energy. If you got solar, I remember Tony, I remember Kevin, different people here, that was supposed to be a really great idea. If you have solar, it's not going to work out very well for you. In fact, you're going to get greener, right? You're going to get green taken out of your wallet. You know something? Why is the city involved in the energy business? You know why? Because they think it's a benefit and they can make a few bucks. They shouldn't be doing it. It doesn't make sense. The firehouse, and also the courthouse. Let me talk about the firehouse. I still think it should be saved. The courthouse, 12,000 square feet, another park, really? I was at that forum. You know something? If we're going to do something like a arts plaza or something, we have plays and stuff like that, 12,000 feet is not enough. What the city should do is negotiate with the school board, get another acre or acre and a half, maybe two, and build something substantial that will help Old Town. The idea that you're going to make a little, something out of 12,000 square feet, you don't own the property behind it, so basically you want to throw money down the toilet at any given time. The logical thing to do is make a deal with the school district, share in the revenue, and build something that will make a benefit. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we've got Barbara Williams.
Actually, I have a short response.
Oh, yes, Mr. Tremblay?
I have a short response, and that is with regard to clean energy, I have a number of things to talk about tonight under council comments, so I would invite folks to listen in. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara? Let me, the mug's on. Okay, three minutes, if you would, please.
Actually, my presentation that I'm going to make should have gotten to you today with actual links in it.
It did.
At a hearing on January 31, 2019, the Ventura County Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding wildlife corridors within Ventura County. The proposed ordinance was approved to be provided to the county supervisors. The Camry Springs Golf Course lies within the corridor called the Santa Monica to Sierra Madre Corridor that provides passage from the Santa Monica Mountains to north of Highway 126. However, since the county has no land use authority within cities, areas like the Camry Springs Golf Course were excluded from the ordinance that protects wildlife corridors within the county with the expectation that you would. The city of Moore Park issued a letter to the planning commission indicating they support the county's ordinance and will institute similar protections within their city. Camry needs to protect wildlife and native vegetation within its city limits, just like Moore Park. As you can see in the packet, the first diagram shows how the golf course links Canal Mountain to the area north of US 101 by using the Camry Springs Road under crossing. To develop the golf course would cut off a path since the wildlife prefer to go around the Mobile Home Park to get to the golf course and to Camry Springs Road rather than going through the streets within the community where they can be hit by cars. I request that the city council, request county staff working the wildlife corridor and Dr. Seth Riley of the National Park Service in the Santa Monica Mountains speak during his study session so you can understand the importance of maintaining Camry Springs Golf Course green space and wildlife habitat as well as being a corridor. There is additional information in the packet, since I only have three minutes, and you have the links to any of the stuff that I've been talking about. All species of Canadian geese are protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and Canadian geese live at the golf course. Mountain lions are a specially protected species in California under the California Wildlife Protection Act of 1990, approved as Proposition 17, and mountain lions live in around the golf course. Please don't impact these two beautiful species. I interpreted the city's council's approval of Newey's referral in September 2017 to have been a conditional approval based on key studies, such as the flood issue and the viability of less than 18 holes. I hereby request that the city council request Newey address at a city council meeting within the next two months the current status of the requested studies and for the council to redress the approval based on new information, such as this wildlife corridor and community opposition based on unmitigable issues and concerns. You allow them to obtain approval out of the normal January approval cycle, and you should allow the public to provide data outside of the cycle as to why the approval should be rescinded. Things have changed, and you have the ability to right a wrong regarding development of an invaluable green space and wildlife habitat. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I've got Amanda Fagan. Is Amanda, okay, Amanda, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Kildie, members of the city council, Mr. Norman and staff. My name is Amanda Fagan, and I'm the Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval Base Ventura County. In the spirit of communication strategies recommended by the joint land use study, I'm here this evening to share with you a brief announcement regarding several upcoming and ongoing exercises at the naval base. First, Exercise Citadel Shield and Solid Curtain 2019 is underway on naval installations within the continental United States from February 4 and continuing through this Friday, February 15. This annual exercise is designed to enhance the training and readiness of Navy security forces. The exercise is not in response to any specific threat, but a regularly scheduled exercise. While I do not expect this exercise to affect Camrio, for your awareness, measures have been taken to minimize disruptions within local communities and to normal base operations. However, there may be times when the exercise causes increased traffic around the bases or delays in base access. Area residents may also see or hear security activities associated with the exercise. In addition, there are two additional exercises that will take place on Naval Base Ventura County in the coming months. First, Exercise Pacific Blitz. United States Marines, sailors and soldiers will participate in Exercise Pacific Blitz at various training facilities and at sea in the Southern California region from March 12 through the 26. The exercise is designed to test our force's ability to plan, communicate and conduct combined amphibious operations over great distances. Forces will enhance expeditionary logistic capabilities and rehearse concepts in simulated contested environments. Measures, again, have been taken to minimize any disruptions within the local communities and to normal base operations, but again, there may be times before, during and after the exercise where residents may see or hear transportation and security activities associated with the exercise, starting at the end of February. Also in March, Naval Base Ventura County Point Magoo will support a large force exercise that will bring approximately 12 to 14 additional F/A-18 aircraft to Point Magoo to conduct unit-level training on the Point Magoo Sea Range. This is similar to an exercise that occurred around the same time last year that you may recall, but will include only about half as many aircraft as last year. For more information, you can follow us on Facebook at Naval Base Ventura County or call NBVC Public Affairs at 805-989-9234. Naval Base Ventura County has an annual economic impact of Ventura County of over $2 billion and supports over 20,000 direct, indirect and induced jobs. And if you'll permit me just 10 more seconds, our ability to support these unique and important training, testing and operational missions such as Pacific Blitz is key to the future of NBVC. We greatly appreciate the continued support of our local partners, including the city of Camrio, and we appreciate the support of our local community as well. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Ms. Craven?
Because this is the one that we get calls on, and we do have a listening public. I just would like to make sure I got this down right. March 12 through 14 is when the large force aircraft exercise will be held at the unit training level, and that will have additional F/A-18s, and they'll be flying over part of Camrio.
So for the large force exercise, I don't have the specific dates in March, although we will put out a press release.
Oh, okay.
Additional information at the beginning of March. It will be 12 to 14 aircraft.
12 to 14 aircraft. I wrote that down incorrectly. Thank you.
And we do typically route the aircraft over the Point Magoo Sea Range offshore as much as possible, but there may be times, particularly during aircraft arrival and departures, that they, you know, may transit over.
That they come over Camrio to get there.
So as they're coming and going, but as part of the exercise, they're not going to be conducting the exercise over Camrio.
Okay.
That is out over the ocean.
The one that concerns our people is the one that's sometimes held in August, when aircraft from all over the world come.
Well, this, we.
This isn't the one.
No, this, this is a different one. This is a very similar exercise to the one that was last March.
Right, right. Well, if you can make sure that the city manager's office gets a special copy of that, we will have it when people call, and we'll be able to answer when they ask why there's so many military aircraft over here.
I'd be happy to share the press release with Mr. Norman's office.
They always do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's get down to departmental. It's the mid-year budget report. I think, Sean, would you like to reopen the CAMSAN on this as well?
I reconvene the Camry Sanitary District. Oh, and let the record reflect that all directors are present.
Okay, Mayor, members of the city council. You have before you tonight the fiscal year 2018-19 mid-year budget review. Tonight, we'll be talking a little bit about the mid-year review purpose and process. The presentation will include a budget-to-actual analysis for all the major funds, to include the general fund, the capital improvement projects fund, the solid waste, transit, water and Camrio sanitary district funds. It's also, we'll also provide a brief overview of the reserve analysis. The purpose of the mid-year review is to evaluate how the city has, the activity the city has experienced in the first six months of the year and the anticipated activity for the remaining fiscal year. As you know, the budget is a dynamic document. It is subject to adjustments throughout the year to include additional appropriations as part of city council agenda actions. This process allows staff to evaluate and determine any significant changes to revenues and expenditures. It also sets the foundation for the mid-cycle annual budget process that will begin shortly this month. For an overview of summary of all funds, the total of appropriations or expenditures for all funds is in excess of $180 million for all city activities, to include the Camrio sanitary district, resulting in a fund balance of well over $166 million. So first, the general fund. Each year, the council adopts a budget effective July 1. The budget is amended through various council actions to include additional appropriations through action agendas. At the close of the year, any budget, purchase order encumbrances are rolled into the new year as well. This year, the most significant change to the budget was the $5 million set aside for the pension rate stabilization fund. That was a $5 million adjustment, resulting in a reduction of fund balance to the amended budget. We will be discussing recommended adjustments to both revenues and expenditures for a net impact of a positive $559,000, resulting in an ending fund balance projected at $57.995 So revenues, we are recommending several revenue adjustments. The first would be the sales tax adjustment of over $385,000. This is really a correction of sales tax that was collected for the prior year allocations via, the state made changes in the distribution to sales tax to various agencies, and it took them a while to get that running properly, therefore, some of the taxes that were generated last year were not received until this year. We are also recommending an adjustment of $294,000 in transient occupancy tax. We did have a hotel that was remodeling last year. They are now complete and, as a result, have increased occupancy and rates for that hotel. Overall, all hotels are experiencing slightly higher Overall, all hotels are experiencing slightly higher occupancy rates as well. We are also recommending a $250,000 increase in Development Services after evaluating planning and zoning development revenues. Based on year-to-date, this seems an appropriate adjustment to account for those increases. There is a slight increase of $25,000 to transfers in from gas tax, and that's primarily as a result of available fund balance in that fund. Overall, that's a $955,000 recommended increase to revenues, resulting in a $43.51 million overall revenues for the General Fund. On the expenditure side, we are recommending expenditure increases of $395,000, and I will be discussing those changes and recommended adjustments. The first adjustment is an increase of $210,000 to the City Attorney Budget for unanticipated legal activity, primarily as a result of the CVRA challenge, resulting in additional legal fees to the city. We're recommending a $10,000 increase to the City Manager's Budget for costs, again, as a result of the CVRA challenge, and which is, we're looking at additional cost for public outreach, noticing flyers and materials. There's a $67,000 increase recommended for the Human Resources Division Budget for accumulated leave adjustments and costs related to reviewing CalPERS regulations on contracted labor. We are recommending one decrease, and that's to the Community Development Budget for the General Plan Element, $140,000. We anticipate spending those funds in fiscal year 1920. That is just a project that the department will not be getting to this year. In Public Works, we're looking at an increase of $30,000 related to consultant services for minor construction projects. In the Library Operations, we're looking at an increase of $76,000 for leave adjustments and grant-related program costs. And in Transfers Out, we're recommending $141,000 increase to fund transit, fund activities to maintain a positive fund balance. In the Capital Improvement Fund, we're recommending one adjustment, a decrease in transfers in from other funds related to reduced air quality funding available. In the Solid Waste Fund, we have no recommended adjustments. In the Transit Fund, we are recommending a revenue increase of $79,000 in FTA grant funding related to additional operating expenses, plus an additional transfer in from the General Fund of $141,000 to maintain positive fund balance. On the expenditure side or expense side, we're looking at $141,000 increase for regional transit expenses. The net result of these changes is $80,000. In the Water Funds, these are the, this would be the Operating Fund, the Capital Fund, and the Conservation Fund and Recycling or Reclamation Fund. We are recommending an increase of $516,000 to water sales revenue due to revised water cost projections, offset by decreases of $30,000 due to current year plan-checked activity, and $610,000 related to capital improvement fees due to timing of development project. These are capital fees that development pays for, and revised estimates indicates that those funds would not be collected this year. We are also looking at an increase in expenses of $500,000 for purchased imported water, which is required to meet water quality standards and new customer demand, and a $61,000 increase for increased cost of chemicals, credit card processing fees, and accumulated leave adjustments. For the Camarillo Sanitary District Funds, this is the Operating Fund, the Capital Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. We are recommending a few adjustments. In the revenues, we are recommending a decrease of $650,000 related to capital improvement fees, again, due to timing of development projects, and a $15,000 decrease as a result of current year plan-checked activity. For expenses, we are recommending an increase of $286,000 to Maintenance and Operations Expense category for cost of chemical supplies, various maintenance services, and credit card processing fees, and accumulated leave adjustments. We did have some other adjustments in various special revenue funds. The TDA Article VIII funding, we did receive our final apportionment figures from VCTC, and that reflects a $99,000 decrease to revenue. Again, we, for gas tax, we did receive our state allocations, and as a result, gas tax revenues were decreased by $303,000. I believe that's as a result of lower fuel costs. SB 1, again, received the state allocation figures, and there is a reduction in that allocation of $66,000, so we're recommending a decrease to that revenue line item. And CIBA, which is the Springville Interchange Benefit Assessment District, a decrease of $636,000 to revenue due to timing of development projects. Few other adjustments, we do collect bridge policy fees. These are capital-related fees collected pursuant to development, and as a result, we are increasing that budget line item due to fees that have actually been already collected today, air quality fees. We are going to recommend a decrease of $77,000 to revenue due to timing of development projects. And in the Library Special Revenue Fund, we are anticipating an increase of $72,000 due to donations as a result of higher-than-anticipated contributions. And finally, for, per the city's policy, staff has evaluated all fund reserve levels. Based on this analysis, the, there are two funds, the Corporate Yard Facility Internal Service Fund and the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund are not currently meeting their reserve goal. As required by city policy, staff will work on a plan to bring these funds to meet reserve goal levels and update the council at the next budget review cycle. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions tonight? Mr. Moshe?
Thank you, Jeanne. I think three, I got three quick questions. On the $210,000 for the City Attorney unanticipated legal expenses tied to the CVRA, those are both, are those both booked expenses, expenses already incurred? Does that anticipate any further expenses through the end of this fiscal year in anticipated litigation or anything? I'm not quite sure where we're at with that.
We looked at expenses incurred and any remaining anticipated expenses, and that adjustment is a reflection of that analysis.
Okay. That handles that. Under Transit, the $141,000 increase in regional transit expenses, does the increase in expense correlate to an increased services directly benefiting Camarillo residents?
I believe the answer to that is yes, and Dave Classel can provide additional information on that.
Yes, that is true. This is for trips outside of Camarillo city limits to the East County, specifically for rides provided to Camarillo residents.
Thank you. And then for the Sanitary District Funds, the $650,000 in capital improvement fees that we've decreased, that's just simply because of a delay in a project. We still anticipate those fees to come in, just not before the end of this fiscal year.
Correct. We project out as best we can what we anticipate development bringing in, and then we revise those figures primarily at the budget, at the annual operating budget cycle, but if we, but if we note through mid-year that it looks like those fees would not be collected, we just reduce the projection and then reanalyze that at the new budget cycle.
Okay, but that money's tied to a, probably a specific development of some sort, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's still going to happen, whatever that development is.
It may be next year, maybe a future year, but that, that is the exercise we go through.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Charlie?
Just want to highlight two things, two questions, Jeanne, and that is, first of all, with regard to the Solid Waste Fund, which is on big page nine, and the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund in the slide relative to the challenges that we have with that fund. Can you highlight for us just what you think some of the challenges are specifically on that Solid Waste Fund that lie ahead in our, in our near term, within the next year or two?
What I would say is that, you know, the Solid Waste Fund includes the Solid Waste Services, which is the majority of what comprises that fund budget. It also includes hazardous household, hazard, hazardous, hazardous household waste.
Household hazardous waste. HHW.
HHW program cost, and also the recycling program costs. So those three components, the largest, of course, being the contract for waste hauling services. So as staff goes through the process of evaluating the contract, any impacts for, for waste, organic waste that may impact that rate will need to be evaluated. And then, as far as the household hazardous waste fee, staff would have to evaluate, again, that's a specific user fee, the cost of implementing that program, and what, what the fee calculation should be, and if there are any limits to what the fee can be calculated at. So there is that component to consider as well. I anticipate that as we go through this next budget cycle, we'll be evaluating each of those programs and providing additional information to council as, and how that affects the fund balance and the bottom line.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, second question is with regard to the Water Capital Projects Fund. It's Fund 863. It's on big page 21, and the question's relative to the D-Salter. I noticed that there really have been no number in our, our anticipated increases in that, in that project. Those aren't really reflected in these numbers in the mid-year budget review, right?
No, generally at mid-year, we're not really adjusting capital projects. We do have, obviously, revised figures for the D-Salter, but for the most part, your capital projects are the figures that were included at adoption, and those are going to be extensively reevaluated in this next CIP cycle. So I would anticipate you will be looking at revised numbers for that project and other projects, and then if there are any projects that are removed from the CIP or completed from the CIP, those would be adjusted as well.
Okay, so we've got work ahead of us.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? John?
Do you have one card? Matt Lormer?
Sure.
You know the drill, Matt.
Well, I see we have a budget. I do have a question. You know, the $210,000, I know Mr. Malley brought it up for the City Attorney, but I'd like to know how much of that $210,000 is in penalties for missing Safe Harbor? Exactly what is that money for? Because you know something? The public should know. If you're just going to say it's legal fees, I'd like to know how much or where exactly the $210,000 is going. The City Attorney should answer that, because, again, a blank check that tells us nothing, you know, Mr. Malley brought up the fact that it's, has to do with redistricting. That's, that's a simple answer, but that doesn't go to detail. I'd like to know. And since we're talking about budget, maybe you should take $25,000 of that for the City Attorney. And, you know, I asked him last year, you know, when somebody does something wrong, like Mr. Morgan, and I asked for investigation, he couldn't answer that. Maybe you should use a little of that money and hire somebody outside the city who can answer that question. So if anybody does something wrong, and I ask the City Attorney, hey, you going to do investigation, and he says, I'm not going to answer you, then maybe you ought to have a little money on the side so you can get somebody who can answer that. The next thing I'd like to know about is you have plan check fees, okay? We have user fees, and those user fees are set yearly by the council. Now, we have a lot of development going on, and one of the concerns that I've heard in the past, when I ran and I've talked to different people, is the developers suck up a lot of time in the planning department. Now it seems like we're giving more money for plan checks. Hmm. The question is, are we charging enough money for developers who are tying up our planning department? I'd like to know that answer. Maybe somebody can explain that to me. You know, again, transparency is really important here. Some of these things were addressed, I agree, but again, you're writing a blank check to the City Attorney, and I'd like to know a little more than it's for redistricting. How much in fines? Exactly where's that money going? If you're at home, you know, we want transparency. Don't you want your local government to tell you, hey, here's the $210,000. I don't know if he's going on vacation, he's going to do legal work. I don't know what's going on with that. You guys are supposed to be transparent. I want a little more than it's going to be used for redistricting. How about a little more details? You know, I like that budget looked at. You know, it's like the Camarillo Ranch House. You guys keep funding that, that, that thing that keeps losing money every year, but you don't put any guidelines on that. You give, they give money, and they lose it, and they go, I don't know why we keep losing money. Everybody looks at each other. I went to a board meeting, and everybody's looking at each other, nobody's writing notes down. You know, there needs to be a little transparency. Charlotte, you go to that committee. You should ask for some transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I think there's a misunderstanding on Safe Harbor. Could I ask the City Attorney to explain what the Safe Harbor period was? If it was against the law to go past it, that's one thing people are saying, and if there was a penalty for just going past that, or a fine, a state fine, because they, some people think that at the end of the Safe Harbor, we by law had to stop whatever process was in the process.
The Safe Harbor has nothing to do with the legal fees that have been incurred. The Safe Harbor rules are that if the council had adopted a resolution within 45 days agreeing to go to districts, and then you add another short time period to have a series of four public hearings, that it all gets compressed within a very short time period. In contrast, what the city has chosen to do is have a more deliberate process to evaluate the districts initially, and then specifically, and Mr. Tully Clifford is the one who's lead on this, to proceed with the districts. You had a council meeting, I believe it was on January 23rd, where you have set forth a series of hearings, and rather than to compress them in a, in a very short period of time, they are not as compressed. There's going to be more opportunity for public input. I believe the first hearing is on February 27th. Is that correct, Mr. Clifford? And then, there's a series of hearings that occur after that, and I believe the final hearing is scheduled in June, after the districts have been formed to adopt the ordinance. There is no fine associated with the Safe Harbor provision. There was be, if you had met that Safe Harbor provision, there would have been a cap on attorney's fees that could have been recovered by a party challenging the city on the CVRA of $30,000. So those are the answers to your questions.
All right. You want to add anything?
To me, I think it's a.
Your phone, yeah.
There we go. A couple of questions of the City Attorney. Under the California Voting Rights Act, is there any requirement whatsoever in the CVRA that cities come within that Safe Harbor provision?
No.
Is there any fine or penalty under the CVRA relative to that Safe Harbor?
No.
And to suggest otherwise is a real mischaracterization and a real misstatement of what the city has been encountering relative to this process. You know, I would say that, in my view, the council, the decision of whether to change from at-large to district elections is probably the most important, if not the most important decision that Oliver make up here. It goes to the fundamental heart of voting rights of everybody, and on an issue as fundamentally as important as voting rights, which affects everyone, the City Council did not immediately cave in to the demands, as some, I think in our community would, would, would want to do. Instead, it, the council thoughtfully reviewed and analyzed the issues before the council made a decision, and I think the council did its job appropriately. So I want to make sure that there's no mischaracterization relative to the fines and penalties in Safe Harbors, because those terms are getting bandied about, and they're not accurate.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, so we've heard the, is there any other questions of staff on this, at this time on the budget? Any questions? All right, so any comments or motions? So any comments or motions?
Move to receive and file the report.
I'll second.
Oh, and we have to approve all of the necessary, I'm sorry. I got the wrong words. Approve the Mudyard Budget Report, which I did, I had in my motion, and authorize the city manager to adjust the FY 1819 budget and make the necessary appropriations. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Sean.
All right. And under the Camryo Sanitary District? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the same motion.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. With that, I'm going to adjourn the Camryo Sanitary District Board.
All right. That gives us, I believe, down to new business, oral communications, and the informal items. And with that, I'll start with the city manager. Anything tonight for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to respond to the comment made about our Facebook page and what we do with that. And so Barbara Williams had in fact asked me a question about this very topic, and I responded to her, and I'm going to be taking my comments from the response I provided to Barbara. And so when the city council authorized the Facebook, the use of Facebook back in 2017, the council intended Facebook to be used as a push media site to provide the public with city-related information and to refer people back to the website for more in-depth information. The use of Facebook was not intended at that time to be a platform for an unlimited public forum or a permanent record of public comment. It was always intended to be used for informational purposes only. As many people do know, the only means of restricting the posting of comments on Facebook is to create a restricted words list. The vast majority of words on that list have been there since we launched our Facebook page in late June 2017, and they were copied from one of the many websites on the internet offering words lists for this very purpose. Words are occasionally added as needed to ensure that comments are not posted to our Facebook page, as was council's direction in 2017. And all posted comments are deleted. We have an email tab on our Facebook page that people can use to email City Hall, as Barbara in fact did. And those comments, when they come through, they are shared with the city councils, as Barbara's was to you. As one of our objectives, as one of the city council's objectives that it just adopted, one of those objectives was to look at the open City Hall platform. And that's offered by OpenGov. And so Open City Hall may in fact be a more effective and responsible means of soliciting comments on city issues. It is certainly a more substantial platform than Facebook for presenting issues, allowing, you know, many more things to be added, you know, for people to look at and see and consider. We will be reviewing Facebook use and policies as part of our discussion on the new community engagement strategy, yet another city council objective, and that will happen later this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to start left to right. Susan, would you like to start off tonight, anything?
Let's see. On January 26th, I attended the Kids Room Event, R for Reading. It was really great to see so many kids out there with their parents. I'm really excited for Kids Room. Then I was at the workshop for the old courthouse on January 29th. I was at the CASA, the ribbon cutting for the court-appointed special advocates. And that was on January 31st. That was sort of exciting for me because working at CASA Pacifica, I know we work very closely with the CASA workers, the court-appointed special advocates. So it was really, the reason they had to open their new office building is because CASA Pacifica has built their new administration building, and so we're moving people around. And so CASA had to move out of CASA Pacifica. So just exciting to see, you know, companies or organizations that were helping each other out in their early years and then be able to move on out onto their own. And then I was at goal-setting on February 6th, and along with a number of other council members, was at the Miracle League of 805, second annual fundraiser on February 7th. And that was fantastic, to see so many people there for such a really, such a great cause. And kind of funny, I mean, I grew up, I've been friends with Rick Penya since we were like little kids. So it's really fun to be this age and feel all grown up and feel like we're giving back to this community that we grew up in. So it was just a really special night for me.
Susan, you might want to, just for the viewing public, what their goal is with that.
Yeah, so the Miracle League of 805 is an organization, it's nationwide. I think there are 100 fields, 100, which isn't much. And it's a special baseball field set up so that disabled and kids with developmental disabilities, or even that are just sick, not just sick, but are not disabled, but suffering either fighting cancer or any other childhood illness, would be able to still participate and play baseball. So it's a specially designed field. And then it's not just building the field, but it's actually keeping it going, because each player gets a buddy. And so it's actual, you know, active volunteerism continuing. And the land was donated by Pleasant Valley School District, and will be used, they'll share the use, and there'll be other uses for the field. So it's really, it's really good to see it's coming to our community, so.
It's a great cause. Anything else? I'm good. Ms. Craven?
Oh, I attended so many meetings. Let's see, there's a list here someplace. It might be easier to read than my handwriting. Thank you. I attended the Camryo Ranch Committee Meeting, which is not the foundation meeting, with Mr. Malche. I attended the Pleasant, the first Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Ad Hoc Committee Meeting on the 30th of January. I attended the Investment Committee Meeting on the 31st of January. My first VCTC meeting on February 1st, and I'll give you a little report on that in a minute. The Airport Authority Special Meeting to look at the bylaws on February 4th. I'd like to thank Susan for stepping in at the last minute and attending that CASA ribbon cutting. I think it was on the 31st. It was rainy, and I was afraid of getting my foot that had just had surgery infected out in the rain. And then it turned sunny all of a sudden, but it didn't keep the infection from coming anyway. I do appreciate your being willing to do that. I attended a Camryo Ranch Foundation Board Meeting on the 5th. I attended, I was not able to attend the second Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Ad Hoc Committee Meeting because I was ill. And I think that's all that I attended. I wanted to talk a little bit about the VCTC meeting. Because there's some things, I know staff knows these things, but I think council needs to know about them too. In December of 2018, the California Air Resources Board adopted an innovative clean transit regulation rule, which it had been developing for four years. In essence, and I'm going to cut down what the paragraph says, it says that by 2026, 25% of all new bus purchases must be ZEB. That's a new acronym for everybody. Z E B, Zero Emissions Basis. By 2029, we're just talking 10 years from now, all new bus purchases have to be Zero Emissions Basis. Which is really interesting, because for the type of bus we use, that bus hasn't been developed yet. Some buses, if they just go on flat levels, like the big buses that Gold Coast, they told us, have, the zero emissions buses have been developed. But for the great big buses, like they operate from, you know, the county bus line, and for the kind we have, they don't have zero emissions yet. So as he said, hang on, and they may relook at some of that. But I thought, and they're also more expensive, so, and more expensive to operate, so we, as policymakers, need to keep that in mind. The 101 widening project, they don't know exactly when this is going to happen or anything else, but they are going to be holding the public scoping meetings. I hear a lot of people talking about traffic, so listen to this. The public scoping meetings for the 101 widening will be held in March of April of 2019. So that's coming up in the next month or two. They're going to be talking there about the difference between standard and non-standard HOV lanes and what they're looking at for here. They haven't decided on the dates yet, so keep an eye out in the paper. If I learn about it, and if they announce it in time, I will announce it at the next council meeting, or at the first council meeting where I know about the dates. And the city will put it on its website, but VCTC should have it on its website too. So those public scoping meetings are the, one of the beginning steps where people have input into the widening of the 101 freeway. And then I'm sad to say that we talked about what's called the Active Transportation Program Cycle 4 Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO component. All this stuff is new to me because I haven't served on VCTC since it first started, and they didn't do a lot of this stuff then. But at any rate, this is for special programs and bike lanes and stuff like that. And I'm sad to say that of the list from Ventura County, the Camryo Project was the very last one. And it was suggested to me that maybe we work on the wording to enhance the descriptions of our projects. That's my report, and I don't think my voice is going to hold up for anything else.
Mr. Malche, would you like to go?
So Charlotte, Tesla needs to make a bus. That's what I hear.
He said it works, he said it works for Tesla, but not, he said it works for Tesla, but not a 55-passenger bus at this point. That's got to go up the grade at this point.
All right, well, since January 23rd, I've done quite a bit, so I'll try to run through this as quickly as I can. Thursday, January 24th, I participated in a ribbon cutting for Edwards Jones Financial, Dawn Simmons, it's Dawn Simmons' office, it's there at Village at the Park in Little Commercial District. It was great. She actually had great compliments to the Community Development Department. And she says that Joe Vaca and his staff was incredibly helpful in her getting that space built out and her opening up. So thank you for that. On Saturday, January 26th, I attended the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Evan Tree at the LDS Church in Las Poses. He's only 14 years old, and yet he's achieved Eagle Scout. He's a very smart, accomplished, and motivated young man. So it was great to see him and his family turn out, and he's got a very supportive family. Monday, January 28th, I attended the Cities Camryo Ranch Committee Meeting. That's the Cities Ranch Committee here at City Hall with Mrs. Craven. On Tuesday, January 29th, I, actually I toured the South Coast Recycling Facility in Ventura. They told me, I don't know if it's true, they told me that I was the first public official to take a tour since their $7 million upgrade of their plant. After touring it, they said I may be the last, because now having to walk up and down all the stairs, it's not as, it's not as simple to traverse as it used to be. So we went up so many different flights of stairs, up and down different parts of the facility. But it's really interesting to see how, what happens to our recycling, once it goes from the bin into the truck and where the truck, you know, drops it off. It was eye-opening to me. It was really cool to see really heavy machinery. I get off on that kind of thing, so it's weird. One thing I did learn is don't place your recyclables in trash bags. It's a mistake, actually. I'm guilty of making myself. They need to go loose into your bin. If you put your recyclables in a trash bag, once it goes on that line, the conveyor belts go quick, and they have two different manual pick lines. If they see a trash bag full of stuff, they take that entire bag and they have to throw it down a chute, which essentially goes to garbage. They don't have time to rip open your plastic bag, empty the contents of recyclables, and then dispose that trash bag. It's just, it'll just mess up the entire line. So for everyone listening and watching, please don't put your recyclables in trash bags. Please leave them loose in your bin.
Including newspapers and white paper.
Thursday, January 31st, I attended an Investment Committee Meeting at City Hall with Mrs. Craven. Got to see exactly where we're investing our money. It's all very complicated and interesting, and I'm happy to say that there's a lot of competence there. So we seem to be very responsible with our money. We always have been, since the 80s. Monday, February 4th, attended the Airport Authority Meeting with Mrs. Craven as well. We revised our bylaws. One thing to note, we amended our terms, our terms for the at-large representative to three two-year terms. So an at-large representative, or the community representative can serve six consecutive years before being termed out.
And splitting the...
Sorry, chime in. Yeah.
We, it used to be that they had two terms, including if they had served as an alternate.
Correct.
We split those two.
Tuesday, February 5th, I attended the Camryo Ranch Foundation Board Meeting, also with Mrs. Craven, out at the Camryo Ranch. Wednesday, February 6th, I attended a Utilities Committee Meeting here at City Hall with Mr. Trembley regarding solid waste ordinance. We had lots of edits and recommendations, and we sent that back, and we hope to get that back at our next committee meeting early in March. Wednesday, February 6th, I was at the goal study session at the Camryo Library, and we already spoke about that. Thursday, February 8th, that evening, I also attended the Miracle League Dinner fundraiser at Las Poses Country Club. Great organization, great event, a great turnout. They packed the place. And the, I had one question, and maybe Mrs. Craven already kind of addressed it, but the, I keep getting questions about the 101 auxiliary lanes. That's not part of what you were talking about, Mrs. Craven, right? This is a separate deal between the city and Caltrans. Can you provide, Mr. Crosswell, any kind of update?
Sure. And brief description is, yes, Camryo City Council, in an effort to do what we can to improve congestion situation on the 101, has moved forward with our own city effort on auxiliary lanes in the northbound direction on the 101. And so that's a separate item that's going forward. We are in a very preliminary project study report process that's required as an initial step with Caltrans. Our consultant has been working on that for some time, is nearing completion of that, where it's into Caltrans for review. So we are progressing forward on our own project for that. We are in coordination with the VCTC, large 101 corridor project, to make sure that our efforts do not conflict and that whatever's, one of the main ideas is, we feel we could get out to construction sooner than what the overall large project is going to do. And whatever is built, will be able to be utilized for any of the future work.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I add to you, just a second? I think the easiest way to differentiate... I think the easiest way to differentiate for people is the city's looking at putting lanes on the outside between our ramps. The VCTC is looking at putting high occupancy vehicle lanes, HOV lanes, in the middle. And that's why they're talking about non-standard, because the width would be different than a normal standard lane.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay?
I've got a number of things I want to chat about, but let me start off with meetings and events. First, the January 26th Eagle Court of Honor, Mr. Malchay covered that for me at the last minute because I was ill, and I really appreciate that, Sean. Thank you. January 29th, attended the Public Workshop on the Old Courthouse property. On January 30th, the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Liaison Committee Meeting with Mrs. Craven. On February 6th, Utilities Committee Meeting with Mr. Malchay, and we had our City Council Meeting, the goal study session at the library that evening. On February 7th, I had a Clean Power Alliance Board Meeting. I attended that via teleconference from Ventura on this particular occasion. And that night was the Miracle League of the 805 fundraiser, which was marvelous for all the reasons that everyone's already given, and it was sold out. And I'm really looking forward to that project moving forward. On February 10th, another Eagle Court of Honor, Troop 225, Colton Simmons. On February 11th, and that was this last Monday, we spent the liaison committee, and Mrs. Craven, I'm sorry you were ill that day, but you avoided a five-and-a-half-hour meeting where we had interviews. Well, it actually was very productive because we had interviews and selection of an architect to prepare concept plans for the four options for senior center community recreation facilities. Mr. Vaca and Mr. Clifford were there as well, prepared the concept plans to conduct debarking analyses and to calculate the refined cost estimates, which we all want to see move forward. So it was a very productive meeting. I have had a concern brought to me on retailer display stands by a retail merchant in Old Town under our old policy, one that has not been revisited for some time, policy 7.05 in terms of being allowed to place display stands outside your retail establishment, and the person feeling that that policy was a little restrictive. And I know the last time we looked at that, I don't have a copy of it with me, but I know it was many years ago, and I would like to see that brought back again to see if either the Policy Committee or otherwise if it could be reviewed. More substantively, and this is where, please indulge me because I have a couple of things to talk about on Clean Power Alliance, and it'll take me a few minutes to get through these. I've got three things to talk about, and two issues have emerged in recent days, and I have some clarification and some additional information to anybody who's listening out there. The first one is with specific respect to customers in the city who have solar panels or who are in the net energy metering side, the NEM side. First of all, for everybody's edification, if you don't already know, the CPA Electricity Service is launching for all residential customers in February 2019. In fact, it launched as of February 1. And that means that on your meter read date this month, your energy supply service will switch from Edison to Clean Power Alliance, and you'll continue to pay Southern California Edison for your transmission and delivery charges. Those are known as the TND charges, and you'll see those on the bill that you received. For customers, now, let's go down into the weeds relative to the solar panel customers. For customers who have solar panels or other generating systems and who are on Edison's net energy metering program, there are a few changes to note. And this gets complicated because there are a number of different groups of these customers. But Edison will true-up your account at the time you transfer to Clean Power Alliance, and the Edison relevant period, the relevant period is the quote-unquote relevant period, that's a period of, a term of art, that's the year-long period that gets reconciled on your true-up bill. That will end. And you'll be billed for any Edison energy charges not offset by the energy credits at the time of the true-up. I hope this is, everyone can follow this because it gets complicated. Now, any Edison energy credits that exceed the energy charges are set to zero for the start of the new relevant period. And if you are a net generator at the time of the true-up, you can receive a net surplus compensation check from Edison calculated at their current net surplus compensation rates. Okay, so what does all that mean? Well, there are residents who are experiencing these true-up costs or zeroing out of their credits on their January 2019 Edison bills. And Clean Power Alliance recognizes that that may be unexpected and is unexpected for some customers. The Clean Power Alliance and Edison are, I'm informed, are working together on a solution to address the concerns of these customers, but the details have not yet been confirmed. The proposed solution could provide customers an opportunity to have their previous credits and their true-up date restored as if they were never enrolled in Clean Power Alliance as long as they opt out of Clean Power Alliance by March 31. I want to be careful in how I say that because it's complicated. The concept should apply to customers who received a mid-cycle true-up on their January 2019 bill, regardless of whether they opted out before February 1. Now, Clean Power Alliance will provide more information to customers promptly once the details are available and once they're confirmed. And for questions on the Clean Power Alliance, the customers can always contact the Customer Service Center. I'm going to read that number. It's 888-585-3788. Or email them at customerservice@cleanpoweralliance.org.
What's that phone number again, Tony?
And again, this is one of two issues that have just come up in the last several days. I also would ask city staff to provide information on this item and on the next one I'm going to talk about to city residents using the city's digital platform, both the website as well as the Facebook platform. And I'm wondering, a question to the city manager, is there a way, I don't know if there, is there a way to identify customers in the city who have those solar panels, whether through building and safety permits? Are there a way to do that easily? Is there a way to do it, and is there a way to do it easily, so we can tailor some very specific communications for them?
No, there's no easy way to do that.
I was afraid of that. Okay. Well, we want to make sure that we push out this information to everybody. Now, I mean, to date, speaking as a whole, customers in the city have received two flyers from Clean Power Alliance and, flyers, two mailings, first-class mailings. Anyway, mailings. And then the city sent out, it's over and above that, the city sent out its own independent mailing, but it wasn't specific as to this solar issue, so that's why I'm focused on. Okay. Second item on Clean Power Alliance, and thanks for your indulgence, and that is that CPA is also aware that before a customer transfers to Clean Power Alliance, well, Edison, before a customer goes over to Clean Power Alliance, Edison's got to bring all customer charges current for the energy they've already consumed while they're an Edison customer, and that's logical. Well, apparently, that may result in some customers receiving multiple bills in one month or receiving a single bill containing charges for multiple bill periods prior to the customer service starting with Clean Power Alliance. My understanding is that that has occurred in very small numbers to date, very small, but it's there, and there is this possibility. But those are not, these aren't, as I understand, duplicate charges. They should reflect completely different bill periods. So please, please, please scrutinize your billings that you receive, and all customers still have the ability to request payment arrangements through Edison if necessary. And if I'd asked the city manager, as issues come up on this, I would repeat that telephone number for Clean Power Alliance, 888-585-3788, or email to cleanpoweralliance@customerservice@cleanpoweralliance.org. And folks could also call city staff, but I think they'll refer directly to Clean Power Alliance to help out if that issue comes up. Finally, I'm receiving input from someone who questions, well, why did the council choose a 36% default rate last October and not the 50% default rate or the 100% default rate? And why did the city, and why did the city join Clean Power Alliance? And I know that Mr. Malchay was not on council at that time, Ms. Santangelo was not on the council at that time, so I'd like to just chat about that just for a second, and Ms. Craven and Mr. Kildie can certainly jump in and correct me if they think I'm running astray. So let me answer the first question. Why join the CPA, Clean Power Alliance? Well, Camarillo is no different than 31 other public entities, two counties and 29 cities, if my math is right tonight, that saw the benefit of CPA. And the CPA is a community choice aggregate. It offers clean renewable energy in three cost tiers and provides local control and accountability and a focus on developing local renewable resources versus, by contrast, reliance on an independent utility provider, okay, on IOU. The second question is, well, why the 36% default here? And in my mind, that answer's pretty simple. The 36% default rate was chosen because that was the most fiscally conservative and prudent option on behalf of city residents, many of whom are seniors with finite income streams. And first of all, Edison uses a 34% renewable factor in its base rate. So by starting at the 36%, there's already a 2%, and I recognize that's small, it's 2%, but it's a start, and that's a percentage increase just by the city being with CPA. More importantly, though, it's anticipated still, the 2019 market is up in the air for a whole lot of reasons, and let me just go through them real quick. First of all, it's anticipated that market conditions and the volatility in the energy market will make energy prices higher for everybody. Regardless of whether you're in the Clean Power Alliance or you're Edison, everybody's going to be paying more during this next year. And that is an especially sensitive issue for seniors because many seniors don't appear to qualify for the CARE program or other subsidies, and they're going to take a hit because rates are anticipated to increase in 2019. Well, add on top of that the fact that Edison's 2019 rates are not yet set. Well, why is that? Well, among other issues, Edison, and I'm going to use this term in quotes, under-collected revenues by approximately $825 million in 2018. Well, what's under-collected? It means they had big market losses, and that's just south of $1 billion. That's $825 million. So that's a significant challenge for Edison. And at this time, Edison has petitions in front of the Public Utilities Commission relative to their rates, but it appears that their new rates for 2019 aren't going to be effective until probably around April 1st, and I don't mean that in jest, probably around April 1st of this year. So, in the face of so much market uncertainty, so much uncertainty regarding Edison's rates for 2019 and the anticipated higher market rates across the board, the council last fall took the position of setting 36% as the default rate for the first year of operation during 2019 because these things are all up in the air, and CPA was just up and getting started. Well, we can revisit that default rate next year, if you'll forgive the expression, when the dust settles. And we want, we obviously, you know, there is a compelling argument to make for a higher use of renewable energy, but there's also a very compelling argument to make for being fiscally prudent, especially during the first year of operation of this CCA, the Clean Power Alliance. It's a balancing act. So the prior council chose fiscal prudence on behalf of its residents, and I think it made the right choice. So, thank you for indulging me on that item. Yeah, Mrs. Craven?
Can I add just one thing? I think it's important to say that another part of that discussion, and it was at the end, was that anybody could opt up, and it was easier to have people who wanted a larger percentage of renewable energy to opt up than to force everybody who didn't want it to opt down.
Right. The policy argument was, do you take 100% renewable and have people opt down? And there were arguments relative on that side of the equation, but as you just stated, Mrs. Craven, there was the option to say, let's take it at 36%, and anybody can opt to 50%, they can opt 100%, and they can opt out of Clean Power Alliance and stay with Edison. That's just the way it is. That promotes maximum flexibility, that promotes accountability, that promotes competition. And last time I looked, competition is not a bad thing, and neither is local accountability and control, particularly in the development of local renewable energy resources, which Clean Power Alliance is focused upon. Let's see.
And this is the first time, to my knowledge, that we actually had that option.
This is the first time. This is a, I mean, there are other CCAs in the state of California, but this is the first time and the biggest CCA in the state of California. Right, Mr. Kali? Let's see. One other thing, too, and I'll make a comment, and for those folks who weren't able to be with us during the 5 o'clock portion of our meeting, and that is, we talked about council goals and to follow on Mr. Norman's comment. I was extremely pleased to see our new goals, many of our new goals, and particularly in the community relations side, and with specific regard to two, one of being Open City Hall and that whole program, because that is an online forum for civic engagement. You read what others are saying about issues in this city, and then you post your own statement, and then we all read the statements and we incorporate them into the decision-making process. It's direct, and it is a, and right now, we're looking at it, right? We're looking at that or a comparable situation. But it is a wonderful engagement tool and a direct engagement tool with a very wide platform presence, and I think it will be really good for us. Thanks for indulging me on all those, but I thought it was especially important on Clean Power Alliance, and I would really appreciate staff getting out information to the city on those two issues that have just come up in the last several days.
All right. Meetings attended. I attended a VRSD meeting, as was said earlier, the goal session, which was a really good meeting as well, and the Miracle League. I know a lot of my colleagues were here. They raised a lot of money that night, too, didn't they? Yeah, that's amazing. Great cause. I also attended several other events. On January 29th, the Educator of the Month at Tara Linda Elementary School. She was really excited about being the Educator of the Month. That was a real good thing to do, a lot of fun to do those. I did, on January 30th, I attended the Camaro Montessori School, which, there's two Montessori schools, and don't get them confused because I went to the other one on Las Poses, and several of them said, you know, a lot of us have went to that one, too. But the one that I went to is the one on Mission Oaks, and those of us that know a little, it's old bank building, but they've completely revamped that, and they've done a great job, and they're doing really good things there. It's a great program, so that was a real nice reuse of that building. I also, with, on Saturday, the 11th of February, the memorial mass for Bob Taylor, and many of us know Bob Taylor. He was obviously president of Chamber of Commerce among many other things. I don't know when he slept. He was in a lot of different venues around town, and I don't know when you're supposed to die, but he died far too young. Another event that I attended, too, on Sunday, which is really thrilling for me, it was Mark Hepler's father's 99th birthday, and many of us know Mark Hepler. He's a very active attorney in town here, and his dad is 99 years old, and he's a minister. And he had an event, and he was actually the keynote speaker, and he gave a talk, and... boy, is he sharp. And 99, it's just amazing that somebody that age can be that sharp, and he hasn't missed a beat. And Mark's got a terrific family, and they're very pillars of our community, and I was thrilled to be there. You don't get an opportunity to see a man that age and have what he has going in his head. I just, I was a sponge that day. Couple of things too, let me make sure, a couple items, do we have an update on the traffic light at Springville, Dave? Do you have any more updates on when that, we can expect that?
So we did have a recent meeting with the developers involved there, if you're referencing the two planned traffic signals on Ponderosa, one at Earl Joseph, and a one at Camino Tirasanta. So they are developments out there, conditioned to install those, and they have nearly completed their plans, they're working on the final steps of processing through Southern California Edison for the power service hookup locations, and they're indicating that at some point in this calendar year, they intend to go to construction. Exact timing on that is still to be determined.
In the winter?
On, the intent is to go into construction on both of them.
Somewhat simultaneously?
Possibly. Again, it's the, we're working with the developers as much as we can to encourage them forward as quickly as possible on both of them. Some of it is related to their timing of their projects out there, and their processing of the plans and then construction.
So, hopefully sometime this year, if all goes well?
Correct.
Okay, that's good news. Also, it's been brought to my attention, I don't believe that we can find a Camrio postcard in Camrio. Does anybody know anybody that sells them? They used to buy them at the Camrio Ranch souvenir, I don't know. Does the library have them? Can we check that out? I didn't know if the Chamber of Commerce had them.
Rite Aid in the back right corner.
You sure they have some?
They, they did a few weeks ago.
Okay. Does the Chamber of Commerce have any?
I sent my husband the other day for my medicine.
Okay. So Rite Aid, and that, the individual said they used to have them at the Camrio Ranch, you know, out there.
People still send those?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, apparently they do, but maybe we can look in to see if we have any, or anybody has any interest in that. No, I know they used to have them at the Camrio Ranch house, but they don't have that souvenir shop there anymore, do they?
They haven't for a few years.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm aware of that, I just, I just know that they, you know, they didn't have a postcard. Didn't know if the Chamber of Commerce had one, maybe we can talk to...
They only had ranch ones there, they didn't have Camrio ones there.
Yeah, that's true, but maybe we can see if the Chamber of Commerce or something would have some, or anything like that, or, can we look into that?
We'll get right on it.
I appreciate that, you're all right. Okay. I think, yeah, I think that's all I have tonight. Okay, so we do have one continuation of a study session item, is that right?
That's correct.
Yep. So with that, can we adjourn? Do we have to recess to the, we have to recess, right?
You're going to recess.
We will recess to the study session.